I didn't expect it to work that quickly. We will go ahead and get started now then. All right, now is the time and place for the conditional use hearing on the application for approval for oil and, I'm sorry, for gas and oil production for the site known as the Leto Well Pad filed by the applicant Olympus Energy LLC. The property identified in the application is 301 Oak Road but identified in the Allegheny County Office of Property Assessments at 305 Oak Road. It's block and lot number 1668 R91. I'm going to start to get a roll call of the board. Shirley Hallibough?
Here.
Buck Fry?
Here.
Jim Spalm?
Here.
Deb George?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. I do want to announce, and this was announced at a public meeting, I believe it was in February, that Supervisor Don Harrison has recused himself from this proceeding due to a financial impact that would occur should the application be approved. So he did announce that publicly. He will not be either voting or participating in the proceedings for the Leto Well Pad. I know many of you were attendees, participants, or at least well aware of the Dionysus Well Pad application and conditional use process. That was filed by Olympus Energy. We went through about nine hearings last year, I think it was last year. And so you're probably familiar with the process, so these those of you who were part of that hearing. But just, we're still going to go over in general some ground rules and processes and procedures so that everyone understands how this is going to work. So we're going to start by just really reinforcing how important it is to speak slowly and clearly so that the court reporter can take down everything that is said during the hearing. We also want to be extremely respectful of one another. I will say I commended the group, the Dionysus hearings, because, you know, it was really an exemplary display of, even though there are highly charged issues, but we know people feel very strongly about, you know, oil and gas operations, especially when it's, you know, in their particular neighborhood. Some very strongly for, some very strongly against. But everyone is respectful, and I would certainly hope that we could count on that to happen again this time around. So no cheering, no jeering, no clapping, and that's a great opportunity for me to get to the third rule, which is please everyone silence your cell phones or turn them off so that we don't have any distractions during the hearing. The way this is going to work is that the applicant is going to go first. The applicant will present, I'm sure, some opening statement and then will present its witnesses to provide evidence and testimony in support of the application for conditional use. And as was explained the last time around, what an application for conditional use is, is that it's a use that is permitted at a particular property if the applicant can establish, can meet its burden to show that the applicant complies with the criteria in the Township Zoning Code. So that will be the burden on the applicant. The applicant will present witnesses, evidence, testimony in support of their application to show that they meet the criteria in the code. There are, in this particular type of conditional use, there are a number of items that are outside the scope of the township's authority to regulate and also outside of the Township Zoning Code. And this is a little unusual because there's such a sort of regulatory overlap or oversight over portions of the way this operation works. So the sort of, you know, kind of standard way to think about it is that the township has the ability to determine where and what, within certain restrictions, oil and gas operations can occur, but it's the state and the Department of Environmental Protection specifically that sets forth the how. In other words, how the actual operations occur. Those are governed by DEP regulations, and what we really want to focus on at this hearing is not so much the how, but is the where and is the zoning code of the township. So I'm sure, you know, this is going to come up throughout, and I'll try to remind folks, but we really need to focus on the zoning ordinance and the criteria contained in the zoning ordinance, no matter which side of the fence you sit on on this particular application. I should point out too, the township supervisors have no interest in whether or not this is approved or not approved. They are sitting in here, they are sitting up here in what is called a quasi judicial capacity, which means they're essentially sitting as judges. It's their job to hear the testimony, hear the evidence, look at the law, and the law in this case is the zoning code of the township, to determine whether or not the applicant has met its burden to, that it complies, that its oil and gas operations comply with the zoning code. So that's going to be the role of the supervisors. They are permitted to ask questions if they like, but generally, as you probably think, in a judge situation, they're really here to listen and to weigh the evidence and to make those determinations. And I will of course be advising them to the extent that they are seeking legal advice on the matter. We are planning to run these hearings until approximately nine o'clock. When I say hearings, I'm working under the assumption that we are not going to be able to get finished up tonight. It's always possible, but I anticipate we would not. If we have a witness who's still going at nine o'clock, we may allot some additional time in order to finish up that witness's testimony. That'll be, you know, up to the supervisors at that time. So after the applicant has put on its case and after each witness, those individuals who determined to be party objectors will have an opportunity to question the applicant's witnesses. In addition, those individuals who are party objectors will have an opportunity at the close of applicant's case to put on their own case, which would include their own testimony, their own exhibits, their own witnesses. And again, that will be familiar to those folks because that's how we operated for the Dionysus hearing. So the board will, once we get the hearing started officially here, will be asking for those individuals who are seeking party objector status to come up and state their name and address. This board has determined that those individuals residing within three quarters of a mile of the site will be granted party status. Those folks who are outside that radius, beyond .75 miles, will not be granted party status. When it comes to the process of submitting exhibits, we are going to ask that the applicant come up to this table, present their exhibits to Attorney Pacholski, who's assisting at this hearing, and Assistant Manager Joseph Shook. And we're going to try to take that off the court reporter's plate so that we can maintain an accurate record to the extent that, you know, there would be a subsequent appeal of the board's decision. So the way this will go again is that while the applicant put on their case, the party objector will put on their case, will give an opportunity for the applicant for a, hopefully a brief rebuttal at some point. And then those individuals who are non-party objectors will, if you would like to still comment, even if you don't live within the .75 miles of the site, will be given an opportunity at the end of the hearing, so prior to the close of the hearing, to provide comments, not to exceed three minutes per person, to state whether you are in favor of or opposed to the application and the reasons why. The board can take those comments into consideration as well when it's making this decision. So with that said, the first thing I'd like to do is ask the court reporter to swear in any potential witnesses. So anyone who will potentially speak today, please stand, raise your right hand to be sworn in. Folks, if even if there's a chance you're going to be speaking today, please err on the side of standing. It only takes a moment. You can raise your right hand, and that way we only have to do this once.
Everyone ready? Do you solemnly swear by Almighty God that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Or do you affirm? Please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There are a few housekeeping items on the township side before we turn it over to the applicant. So the first item is to ensure that the township properly advertised and posted the property. I'm going to ask Assistant Manager Joseph Shook to come up to what we're using as the witness stand here. And Mr. Shook, if you could identify yourself with the record?
Joseph Shook, Assistant Township Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Shook. And Mr. Shook, can you confirm that the township published notice of this hearing twice as required by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code?
Yes, that is correct.
And was the property posted?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And I have, you previously provided me proof of that publication, and that's in the, make sure I have it here. I'm looking at this proof of publication, Mr. Shook. Is this, I think you have a copy as well?
Yes, that's it.
And that's a true incorrect copy of the notice that was published?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to make that township exhibit one. Can everyone hear me out there, by the way? Is the microphone coming through? Okay, great, thank you. All right, and I have a photo of a posting, Mr. Shook, and is that a true and accurate photograph of the posting of the property?
Yes, it is.
And can you tell me, this is just one photograph you've provided me, can you tell me how many postings were made of the property?
There were three total.
Okay, thank you. We're going to make the posting photograph township exhibit two. And prior to getting to this point in the proceedings, the Township Planning Commission reviewed this application and a presentation by Olympus Energy. During that presentation, or after that presentation, there was discussion by the Planning Commission regarding some potential conditions of approval. A motion to approve the application subject to those conditions was made, and however, that motion failed two to two. So we do not have a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission, but I do want to make, as part of the record, both the communication from the Township Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors, as well as the minutes of the meeting from June 24th, 2021. We're going to make that collectively township exhibit three. And you have that in your hand, Mr. Shook? Is what I'm holding here with the letterhead and the minutes that are attached, are those true and accurate copies of what I described?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shook. And that will be township exhibit three. I think that's all the questions I have for you, Mr. Shook. I will add procedurally, once we do close the hearing, the board will have 45 days to issue a written decision, including findings of fact and conclusions of law, and subject to any extensions that the applicant may grant as necessary, and depending on how long the transcript is, frankly. So we will then proceed in that manner. And at this time, unless there's any questions from the board or Mr. Mater, I think we can go ahead and turn it over to the applicant. And, you know, why don't we go ahead and do the, why don't we get the party objector situation out of the way first? I don't want to say out of the way, but situated first. So before we turn it over to the applicant, those individuals who are seeking party objector status, if you could please, one at a time, or actually, why don't you line up at the witness microphone? Again, you are sworn to tell the truth in this matter, so we're asking that you state your name, address, and the approximate distance, your approximate distance from the Leto Well Pad site.
Good evening, my name is Tim Westnady. I am representing the residents of West Eer, known as Crowe. We're a community organization under the Municipal Planning Code with a member list and a map of members that I provide.
So just to clarify, Mr. Westnady, as the representative of Crowe, will you be the individual who is acting on behalf of the group, or are individual members intending to participate in the deal?
So I believe there's some delineation between what Crowe's interest is in this proceeding versus what some of the individual party objectors are. Crowe's interest is more research and more in space. So there are some questions that Crowe, you know, recognizes out of our purview, I suppose, that individuals might still want to ask those questions, but we're going to try to cover as much as we possibly can of these individuals, which although some of them aren't here, you know, they can't come for health concerns, I think Mr. Mater may have received, I slowed down, sorry. I think Mr. Mater may have received some communications this week about some of our members who tested positive, tested positive for COVID. So, and we certainly don't expect all of these people to be able to come to everyone. So we're going to try to cover as much as we can so that we don't have excessive cross-examination. But I can't guarantee you that people on this list won't have their own questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Westnady. And I will, at this point, I think it's, I really want to emphasize that in order to keep the hearing moving, because we do have a lot of individuals, there's a lot of information to process, we want to avoid repetitiveness. If someone has already asked a question that you want to ask, or has provided the testimony you want to provide, or has already adequately raised the issue that you're concerned about, we would respectfully ask that you allow that to stand as is, or at the very minimum, let us know that you agree with whoever's testimony that was, so that, you know, we can keep things moving. Because we do not intend to have this be another nine nights of hearings. As much as we love to spend all that time together for the Dionysus, I think it's really in everyone's best interest to drill down on the issues that are relevant to this board's determination in order for the board to obtain the evidence and understanding to make the decision that it would make. So thank you, Mr. Westnady.
I did have one more thing I would be remiss if I didn't say. I would like to offer the Leto Well Pad Emergency Response Plan and the evidence that shows a one-mile evacuation buffer, which I would, my condition is that that would represent an impact on residents if circle has been drawn around their home. So I would urge the board to reconsider and at least go with the one-mile evacuation buffer that the applicant themselves has defined as an evacuation buffer.
We will note your objection to the board's determination regarding standing for the record. Thank you, Mr. Westnady.
My name's Victoria Austin. I reside at 19 Hemlock Street in Bearford.
And your approximate distance to the site?
That's what I'm bringing up. I've provided a Google Earth map that shows that I'm less than 800 feet from the well site, and so I have serious concerns about this.
And again, it's not necessary to provide evidence if you just want to, you're under oath, so if someone comes up and says that within three quarters of a mile, that's sufficient. We want to keep this moving.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, my name is Ronald Twlinski. I live at 188 Bryson Road in Bearford, PA. And according to this, the actual portion happened, I have also the [inaudible]. I'm within three tenths of a mile from the proposed gas well site.
Thank you, Senator.
My name is Yvonne Hutchinson. I live within three quarters of a mile of the proposed site on 425 Bearford Road.
She speaks for me, but I also reside at 425 Bearford Road, three quarters of a mile from the...
Your name?
Robert Hutchinson.
Sally Berutonda. 108 Mountain Dew Road. Bellator, Oteo, and Meade. 108 Mountain Dew Road, across by about 1.1 miles away, and I have well water and Mountain Dew's following me.
I'm sorry, how far away did you say you were?
1.1. Well, I wasn't aware of that because I thought I was in the evacuation zone, and I thought maybe I would be able to say something.
You will be able to speak during the public comment portion, but the board does not recognize party status for it.
Who decides the, this area of three quarter mile? Who decides that?
The board of supervisors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Cara Randza, R-A-N-D-Z-A. I reside at 210 Locust Street. My property lies approximately 650 feet from the proposed well site.
My name is Jonathan Randza, R-A-N-D-Z-A. My property is 210 Locust Street, and we are 650 feet from the well pad.
Talk for my wife, Carol Lawrence, 597 Bearford Road. It's in the [inaudible].
Is it within three quarters of a mile?
I don't know.
We can look into that probably between now and you'll be putting on our case. Thank you.
Jack Rea, R-E-A-R-I-S-K.
Marcia Brissette, B-R-I-S-S-T-T, 37 Corywood Lane. We are within a three quarter mile.
Right on board.
My name's Laura Henderson. I live at 204 Locust Street, and I'm approximately, probably less than a half a feet from the Well Pad.
My name is Rachel Malachi, M-A-L-C-K-I, and I live within, you know, evacuation zone at 204 Locust Street.
Could you be a little bit more clear as to how far away? Are you within three quarters of a mile?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eva Birch, that's spelled B-U-R-C-H, and I live at 210 Pine Lane of Bearford, and there is exactly one block between the Dollar General and my house.
My name is Paulus Ballantyne. I live at 294 Oak Road, approximately, and I have a big block.
Please spell your last name. Last name?
Ballantyne, B as in boy, A-L-E-N-T-I-O-D.
Thank you.
My name is Emily, E-M-I-L-I-E, last name is Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N, and I live at 358 Oak Road in Gibsonia, PA, a little under, about 0.3 miles from the site.
My name is Jason Miller. I live at 241 Orchard Street. I'm approximately four tenths of a mile from the Well Pad. Thank you.
Julie Pausley, S-O-A-S-L-D-Y. I live at 61 Lake Road, and I am less than half a mile from the site.
My name is Andrew Matina. I live at 883 Ashley Road, and I'm within a three quarter mile to my house.
Spell your last name, please.
M-A-T-Z as in Victor, Y-A.
My name is Mark Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. I'm Emily's husband. I live on 358 Oak Road in Gibsonia, PA, 15044, I'm .3 miles away from the site roughly.
I'm Perry Drum, D-R-U-M. My wife's Sue Drum. We live at 247 Ash Lane, about quarter of all.
My name is Leonard Verdetto III. Leonard, L-E-O, N-A-R-D. Last name is Verdetto, V as in Victor, E-R-D-E-T-T-O. And I live about 100, 800 feet from the site. It's 21 Hemlock Street, Bearford, PA.
My name's Paula Brown, like the color. And I'm at 277 Oak Road, and I'm about a half a block.
My name is Jeremy Keenig, spelled K-O-E-N-I-G. I'm at 233 Oak Road, which is about three tenths of a mile from the well site.
My name is Gregory Petrow, P-I-E-T-R-O-N-E. I live on Wagon Wheel Lane, 25, and I'm within a half mile of emergency evacuation area.
Are there any other individuals who are seeking party status for this matter? Mr. Lucas, do you have any objections to those individuals who requested party status?
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Wayne Lucas from Bass Town, on behalf of Olympus Energy LLC. I provided to you this today, and I have a hard copy, including a record, a memorandum of our position on standing. Basically, the Olympus's position is that...
Wayne, use the mic!
You need to be within one half mile.
Hurry it up!
Folks, hey, listen, we can't have people yelling in the audience. That's not getting us off to the right start here. This is, we're all working with the equipment that we got, and we'll do our best to make sure everyone can hear. Mr. Lucas, why don't you start over? I think you referenced that you were going to submit, or you had submitted a memorandum regarding standing.
Yes, and I've provided a copy to your associate tonight. I have an extra copy for any objectors for the public. Our position is basically anyone needs to be within a half a mile of the Well Pad. Based on what I've heard, most of those individuals look like they probably are. I mean, like, there might be a couple exceptions, but certainly people on Locust, Hemlock, or Oak, we don't have objections to. So rather than protract things this evening, we just preserve the right. If it turns out that some of these individuals aren't within a half mile, we would object, and certainly with the board's determination on the three quarter mile, if any of those individuals are beyond three quarters of a mile, we obviously would object to them too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lucas. Okay, I think that's the housekeeping items that we needed to wrap up before we move into the applicant's case in chief. So, Mr. Lucas, are you prepared to move forward at this time, or is there another item you'd like to address?
No, we're ready to move forward.
Okay.
Again, my name is Wayne Lucas, on behalf of Olympus Energy. As the solicitor's already indicated, this is the Olympus's application for conditional use of the Leto unconventional well pad located off of Oak Road, approximately 1.3 miles north of State Route 910. Deep well sites are authorized in the industrial district in which this property is located, and in fact, in all districts of the township as a conditional use. The property in question is owned by Tricia Alph, which are the names, is Zinski. The initial application, when this went to the Planning Commission, proposed five wells and with the possibility of additional wells. As we'll explain here tonight, that's been modified slightly, and the Olympus is proposing now additional six wells instead of five, with the possibility of six more in the future. Some housekeeping items in terms of exhibits. We have marked as our exhibit A, the full application that was originally submitted to the township. Three binders, three binders, each of which is a copy of that application, are sitting in front of you, Mr. Rob. I intended one for the court reporter, one for the township, and then one for your office. We do have one additional copy here, although I understand that this application has been readily available online for some time. But in the interest of saving a few trees, we didn't make 10, 15 copies of this.
I'd like to make an objection about timely. So I have, I have an objection to the blanket acceptance of all of the exhibits on the Crowe's... ground side. It's inadmissible hearsay until a witness testifies to that regard.
I don't think that exhibits have been moved into evidence, first off. They, it's just, it's just been introduced. And, uh, it's pretty commonplace in a situation like this where you've submitted an application and related exhibits, uh, to have them be made part of the record. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't ask questions about them or raise objections regarding parts of the submission, but now is not the appropriate time to object to wholesale to the applicant's application and associated items.
I do have one specific objection to the sound impact study that, um, I'd like to prepare. I believe we could address this, maybe resolve it prior to coming up later than might cause a delay. Would you be interested in hearing that?
Why don't you briefly just summarize for us what your position is, if we can get rid of that issue upfront? I'd love to do it.
Uh, I believe there's a foundation issue with the sound impact assessment. Um, the sound impact, um, assessment references some sound level data that we used in the noise models that wasn't collected.
Mr. Resetti, I'm going to stop you there. That would be the appropriate fodder for cross-examination, uh, and/or your case in chief, if you want to challenge the validity or accuracy or whatever it may be, uh, to that sound report. Uh, so there's been no testimony, the report itself has not been discussed at all. You will have an opportunity to raise those issues, but now is not the time. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Solicitor. Uh, again, it's typical for an application to be the first item that's included as part of the record. Um, I would like to point out though is, uh, we do have one more, uh, housekeeping exhibit before we call our first witness. And that is, uh, as the board is aware, uh, there's been a significant passage of time between the times this application was filed in 1919, or 2019, uh, and the present date. Uh, there have been some intervening events that have occurred, uh, and what we would like to do is offer it into the record. In the, what we say, in exhibit A, the, the application binder, there was a, a project narrative that attached a number of other documents. Uh, there have been some changes, uh, that necessitated a change and some modifications to, uh, that document. Uh, and we'd like to introduce those as exhibit D. And I will give a brief explanation as to what the changes were.
And Mr. Lucas, if you could, and I know you'll do this, but please make sure you have a couple of copies that are available for the, uh, other parties.
Give a brief overview of what those changes were. Since this application was originally filed, a number of, uh, permit applications submitted to DTP have now been granted, uh, so they are included. Uh, the original application just had the applications that were submitted to DTP, for example. Uh, also, uh, there's been an update of the, uh, HOP, Highway Occupancy Permit, uh, granted by PennDOT for the access road on Oak Road. Uh, that is included in the updated narrative. Um, there have been several other, uh, changes. One, uh, as I indicated, there are going to be five, or six wells initially instead of five. Uh, updated, uh, plot plans of the pad itself are included in the packet. Uh, I would stress that there have been no changes in the overall site layout, just the, the positioning of the wells and the equipment within the pad itself. Also, uh, we have an updated setback map, uh, in light of some intervening events and information we have obtained. Uh, we have a, uh, uh, an updated sound impact assessment. And, uh, we will have on both the setback map and the sound impact assessment, witnesses testifying on those. So in terms of, uh, Mr. Resetti's concern, uh, those, those documents will be vetted. Uh, though, they are not actually included in the narrative, but they are referenced, but they're going to be presented during the hearing. Uh, there are also, uh, the reference to updated what are called line of sight drawings in terms of the visual view of the site from a various number of places. Uh, but frankly, in light of, uh, the determination from this board and diagnosis as to the desire to have pictures with leaves, uh, off the trees. And those three documents, the setback, uh, the SIA, Sound Impact Assessment, and the Line of Sight exhibit are not attached to this, but the reference is being updated. So we will have witnesses to identify all of those items. So we'd like to move the admission of exhibit B.
Yes, the, the exhibit B is, is admitted into evidence, again, subject to, you know, the ability of.
Yeah, yeah. So with those preliminaries out of the way, we would like to call Mr. Joseph Blickenderfer. Mr. Blickenderfer, can you state and spell your full name for the record?
Joseph Blickenderfer, B as in boy, L-I-C-K, E-N, B as in dog, E-R, F as in Frank, E-R.
And, and by who are you employed?
I work for Michael Baker International. Um, it's about a 3,000-person firm, the largest, uh, engineering firm headquartered in the Pittsburgh area. Excuse me one second. Can, can everybody hear me?
No.
How about now?
And, and what is your position at Michael Baker?
I'm the technical manager of all of our oil and gas operation site designs.
And what are your professional credentials?
Uh, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Pennsylvania and West Virginia.
And in your role at, uh, in your position at Michael Baker, what are your job responsibilities?
Uh, for this particular, uh, project, I was the, the project manager in principal recharge.
And, uh, just generally speaking, what, what, what does that mean in terms of your role?
My role in this project specifically would have been the design of the plans that have been admitted. So it would be the civil site plans and the environmental design.
So at this point, um, we're going to project up on the screen, hopefully. What we marked is exhibit C, and we also have a, a hard copy, uh, that we'll hand out to the board and to the other parties.
Can't stand. We've, if you're a minute.
Yeah. One switch controls this whole bank of lights.
Do you want to try to see if, try to dim that, that, that bank and see?
We can play around with it.
Do you want? I think it'd be worth it. It's important for us to be able to see. There's anyone who's having difficulty seeing, if you want to come up closer, I know we don't want to kind of mad rush to the front, but, you know, obviously it's important for,
it's important for people to, to have an understanding of the location of the site and, and see, you know, relevant exhibits are being presented. So, uh, there's a, there's a table up here, uh, that you're welcome to, to come and sit at temporarily, if you want to kind of swap in and out, just be respectful of your fellow citizens, we appreciate that.
And Mr. Blickenderfer, first, uh, the first page of exhibit C, our copies is projected up on the screen here, and I see that you do have a, uh, laser pointer now. If you could describe generally what, uh, that, that, this document is and just orient, uh, the board and the public as to the location of the proposed well pad.
Yeah, this is the general location of the pad. Hopefully you can see the pointer. Uh, the well pad located here is just off of Oak Road. Oak Road, if you follow the south, is down to 910. Um, there's a Crossword Motorsports building here and the Dollar General just outside the, the entrance to the site off of Oak Road.
And, uh, who's the owner of the property again?
Gazinski's.
Okay, what's the approximate acreage?
95.2 acres.
Okay. Um, if we could go to now the second page of exhibit C, uh, is this the haul route for the site?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to have you just generally describe it. Others will get into more detail on this. Uh, if you could just describe generally what the proposed haul route is.
Sure. Similar to the last rowing, the well pad's located in this area. So trips to the site would be from 910 either direction up, uh, Oak Road to the site.
Okay, is, um, uh, am I correct that both Route 910 and Oak Road are state roads?
They are.
Okay, and are either of them weight restricted?
No.
Uh, has there's always bonding required on them?
No.
And I would just note that, uh, the updated HOP, uh, is contained in exhibit B, uh, the, the update of the, uh, uh, the, the, the project narrative. Uh, and again, we'll have other witnesses that will describe, uh, uh, and have their observations with respect to the, the haul route, but just to kind of orient every, everybody on the front of the program, Mr. Blickenderfer, uh, note that. Uh, if we could now go to the third page of exhibit C, um, could you describe what this is?
This is the let-o well pad site plan, site grading and layout plan.
And starting at the access road, uh, entrance with, uh, Oak Road, can you kind of just walk through for the board and the public of what's located on the site?
So as you turn into the access road off of Oak Road, there'll be a 50-foot paved entrance in accordance with the PennDOT Highway Occupancy, uh, permit requirements. From there, the, the access road will be about another 1,068 feet. It varies in width from 24 to 34 feet wide. That would allow, uh, trucks, if parked on the road, to pass each other in either direction. Uh, the surface of the road.
And Joe, when you say, uh, the truck, just to break this down a little bit, if, uh, if the truck is stopped and another truck wants to pass it, will there be enough width in the road to allow for the truck to be passing in the opposite direction?
That would be the case for over half the length of the road.
And again, what's the, the first part of the access road is, is paved per PennDOT standard, right?
Yes.
And then the balance of it, what's the construction material?
Gravel surface.
Okay. Moving on up then, uh, to the top, uh, of the site, uh, what do we see next?
So beyond the access road is the well pad itself. It's about 500 feet by 350 feet in, in size, and that will be gravel surfaced as well.
Are there any stormwater facilities on the site?
Yeah, there's a, a wet pond, um, at the, the northwestern corner of the pad. The purpose of that pond, it has really nothing to do with oil and gas generation or processing. It's, uh, it, its sole intention is for stormwater management. So much like you would see at, uh, residential or commercial development, uh, anytime you add, we call them curvia surface, a paving, gravel, those kinds of things, there's an effect on the, the stormwater drainage and the PAGP regulates that as part of a permits that we, uh, have to, uh, have to get approved. And the purpose of that pond is to mitigate any additional runoff that could come from the city.
And what's the approximate size of the pond?
About 110 feet by 150 feet.
Now, are, does, as part of the DTP approval process, uh, is Olympus or any operator required to, uh, employ various best management practices as part of the, uh, design of the facility?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Would be any, uh, pumps, motors, or other equipment on the pond that would generate emissions?
No.
Uh, would, there would be any pumps or equipment that would generate any emissions?
No.
Uh, am I correct that the, uh, as part of the process that Olympus needs to go through, the site design for both the temporary road and the sanitation control and stormwater management are submitted in what's called an ESC TP3 application to Department of Environmental Protection?
Yes.
And did that happen here?
Uh, it did.
And did DTP approve that application?
Uh, yes, it was approved on March, uh, I'm sorry, on March 9th, 2020.
And again, that approval was noted as an attachment to the project narrative. Um, let's talk a little bit about, uh, security around the site. Uh, specifically fencing.
Okay. There, there's a, there's a fence proposed around the perimeter of, uh, the well pad site, basically this rectangle.
And now the ordinance has numerous requirements for fencing, uh, is, Olympus comply with those?
Uh, they will.
Now, the ordinance states that, uh, uh, barbed wire is not committed on the top of the fence, is that correct?
That's correct.
And Olympus practices typically to have barbed wire, is that correct?
Yes.
Is Olympus committing that, consistent with the township ordinance, uh, barbed wire would not be placed on the top of the fence?
Yes.
That was another ordinance requirement, that all posts around the site for the fencing be embedded in concrete, familiar with that?
Yes.
Uh, you're aware that Olympus typically does not embed all its posts in concrete so that, uh, panels can be removed to access its best management practices?
Yes.
Okay. Notwithstanding that here, uh, is Olympus, uh, committing to comply with the ordinance and embed all posts of concrete, all posts in concrete?
They are.
Okay. Uh, what about the gates to the site?
There'll be a security gate on the fence.
And the ordinance requires that, uh, there be, that gate be lockable at least 12 feet wide, uh, is that correct?
That's correct. It will be 16 feet wide.
Okay. Uh, now there's also an access drive gate down here, Oak Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
And is that also at least, uh, 12 feet wide?
It is.
Okay. And now, uh, Olympus is, uh, typically installs that, that, that lower gate for, uh, security purpose, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but if the township for some reason does not want that as part of the plan, is Olympus willing to eliminate that gate?
They are.
Uh, talk a little bit about height. The ordinance has a maximum height of 35 feet, uh, that does not apply during drilling and hydrolog fracturing. Are you familiar with that provision?
Yes.
Uh, will the permanent facilities on the site after, uh, uh, drilling and hydrolog fracturing exceed the, uh, the height limits of 35, 35 feet under the ordinance?
No.
Okay. Is there an off-street parking requirement under the ordinance?
Uh, yes.
And how many spaces are required?
One space.
And will there be at least one space on the site?
There will.
So let's go to the, the next page now, uh, of exhibit, uh, C. Is this, uh, what I'll generally characterize as an updated setback map, uh, for the site?
It is.
Right. Now, the ordinance requires that a deep well site be at least 650 feet, uh, from any, uh, existing building, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, and this drawing is an update from the one that we submitted, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What is the closest building to the, uh, to the edge of the well pad?
The closest building is on Hemlock, and it's 688 feet to the edge of the pad.
How do you determine that distance?
Through survey and aerial mapping.
And what would you characterize as your margin of error, uh, with respect to that calculation?
Uh, less than a foot.
Uh, now, previous, uh, we, the previous version of the, the setback map showed a separate additional structure on that same property that you're talking about, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what was it?
I believe it was a shed in the yard of the closest house that was on Hemlock Street.
I have an objection, I don't believe there's been a foundation as to how Mr. Blickendorfer would know what that building was prior to that, is it still a foundation there?
Well, we're gonna get more to the point of what's there now.
We'll go ahead, Mr. Lucas, sounds like he's going to address that estimate.
Now, you're not showing that anymore, why is that?
I was asked to remove that because the structure's no longer there.
Okay, we could advance to the next screen from exhibit C, that was the last page of exhibit C. What is that page, what does it show?
It shows the backyard of the residence where the structure was shown on the previous drawing.
So whatever the basis for the original determination as to that existence of that structure is no longer there, correct?
That's correct.
And just for the record though, what is the distance, what was the distance of the rubble that was shedded one time apparently from the well pad?
Six hundred and sixty-eight feet.
Now, if we could go back to the previous page. Located to the south-southeast of the proposed well pad is property owned by what's called the Clean Streams Foundation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And your previous setback map showed distances from several structures that were on that property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And they're not included on this map because Olympus specifically was truly asked you to delete them, is that correct?
That's correct.
Our next witness is gonna testify in detail as to why those structures are not being included now as existing buildings. So you have evaluated that yourself, is that correct?
That's correct. Mr. Lucas, I think the board, at least maybe I'm speaking for myself, we're having trouble understanding where the Clean Streams property is on the map.
If you could just delineate, there's a large that, that's a former detention pond for acid rain drainage, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and there's several structures that were associated with that that are located immediately to the north and to the east of that pond, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And again, our next witness will testify in detail about those structures. Previously, it's been suggested that the stormwater ponds are subject to the six hundred and fifty-foot setback requirement. Now, again, the pond here, if you can point that out to the board. But again, is there any equipment on the pond?
No.
Any motors?
No.
Any noise or air emissions?
No.
And in any of that, is the pond located greater than six hundred and fifty feet away from any protected structure or any existing building under the ordinance?
It is.
There's also a soil stockpile on the site, could you point out to the board where that is? It's immediately to the west of the pad, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Does that mean, is that soil stockpile at least six hundred and fifty feet from any existing building?
It is.
Where is the guard shack going to be located?
The guard shack will be at the end of the access road, right on the pad.
Okay, is it more than six hundred and fifty feet from any existing building?
It is.
Lastly, let's talk about what's called a limit of disturbance. What is a limit of disturbance?
A limit of disturbance is a permitting term that basically sets the limits of potential disturbances at the site. And on this map, it's shown as this blue line basically encompasses all the work that's planned there.
Now, it's a limit position that only the pad and not the limits of disturbance qualify for purposes of being considered a deep well site. Others may differ on that, but that's a limit position. That being said, I can see on the right-east side of the pad the six hundred and fifty-foot radius that's drawn from the nearest house on Hemlock overlaps with the corner of the limit of disturbance. Will there be any, in that triangular area that's overlapping, will there be any grading in that area?
There will not.
What will be located in that area?
There'll be some erosion sedimentation controls, filter sock down slope of that area. This area really just allows the contractor room to move around, move equipment as he's building the pad.
Okay, so there's no, that filter sock is the same thing you see in conjunction with any commercial or residential development?
That's correct, if you see road work along the roadway, it's kind of black snake-looking material, it's filled with compost, it basically filters stormwater runoff as it uses it.
And once the pad is completed, is the filter sock removed?
It is.
Then on the southwest of the pad, which is a small area that there's an overlap between the six hundred and fifty-foot setback and the limit of disturbance, what is gonna take place in that area?
There's an upstream diversion burn, little outlet just out of that, in that area. And its purpose is to basically direct stormwater runoff away from the disturbance area.
Will there be filter sock in that area too?
There'll be filter sock as well.
Okay. I'm gonna shift gears to our next exhibit, just take a moment here. Mr. Blickendorfer, we're now going to project up like a screen and hand out a copy of what is marked as an Olympus exhibit C.
And again, I would ask, I think the applicant's doing this, but we are gonna make a pile of these exhibits available on that side.
We have it, yes.
Great, so if there's individuals who, especially if you can't see, if you want to take a look at a copy, you're welcome to do so.
Mr. Blickendorfer, you evaluated the visual screening of the properties around the proposed well pad?
Yes.
And do you also take into account existing topography and vegetation?
Yes.
And in connection with that, did you prepare an exhibit?
I did.
And that is what we marked as exhibit D, is that correct?
Yes.
Let's start with the first page of exhibit D, could you describe to the board and the public what it is showing?
So with this drawing, you can see the well pad, denoted there, the purple, pink color rectangle. The purpose of this exercise was to go to the nearest residents and other locations that could be visited by the public to understand what parts of the wellhead they may be able to see from each of those vantage points. So each of these red arrows was one of the locations in which we took pictures and tried to understand what that should be look like once the pad's constructed.
Okay, and then the subsequent pages of exhibit D delineate certain information with respect to each of those points that you identified on the first page, is that correct?
That's correct.
Just by way of example, let's go to the next page of exhibit D. L one line of site profile, that's what this is called, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that matches up with the point noted as L one on the first page of the drawing?
That's correct.
And that is a view from the end of Hemlock Street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, a prior version of this was submitted to the planning commission, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and it included, among other things, the photo on the left showing the vegetation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What does the photo on the right depict?
That was a recent photograph that, obviously this time of year, there's no leaves covered.
Okay, and the distance you're showing up on the top, that is between what two points?
That's between the point from which this picture was taken to the proposed wellheads.
In this case, what's that distance?
One thousand thirty-two feet.
Okay, that's more than the six fifty or six eighty-eight because the wellheads are located more in the center of the well pad, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do these, both sets of these pictures accurately depict the conditions that existed several years ago with the leaves on the tree and now with the leaves off the trees?
That's correct.
You delineate eleven points here as part of this exhibit. How would you generally characterize the visibility of the where the wellhead would be based on the existing vegetation at each of those eleven points?
There should be no line of sight from most of these, there are three where there could be potential.
Okay, is that visibility affected by whether the leaves are on or off the trees?
Not from what I saw, the vegetation's a lot of brush, there's not really mature woods. So even with the leaves off the trees, it really didn't make a difference.
Let's talk about the couple exceptions you did note. Let's focus on L nine and L ten, which are located almost off the screen to the far west of the well pad. And how far can we advance up to L nine? What was your conclusion with respect to the vantage point L nine?
L nine's higher elevation, so you're kind of looking down on the well pad site. In fact, you can see it in the vegetated area that's shown here in this photograph.
Okay, and what's the distance from that vantage point to the well pad?
Two thousand three hundred and twenty-two feet.
Now, when you went through this analysis, you actually went out and placed a marker of some sort on the well pad at a gauge roughly the approximate height of what a wellhead would be, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and from this distance, if you could, again, point your laser pointer, how small would a wellhead of eight feet in height look from almost a half a mile away?
I think it'd be tough to see.
Let's look at L ten. What was the distance from L ten?
Two thousand four hundred and eighty-three feet.
And basically your conclusion, it would be visible there, but it would have to be at such a great distance that it would be there. You would see it, but it would basically just be a distance.
These, both of these few points were from, had along the road in the same location, so it's the same situation, at a higher elevation, but very far distance.
And then lastly, let's go to the one other way that we concluded there might be some visibility, which one was that?
L five.
And where is that located?
This is actually the view looking directly down the access road.
And you have any, what's your opinion as to whether the wellheads would be visible from that site location?
I honestly couldn't tell, I could not see the target from this location, but when I went to the wellhead location and looked back at the road, when a car would drive by, I could catch glimpses kind of through the trees to see the cars.
Let's go back to the first page of exhibit C.
Excuse me, sir, sir, this is not the time to ask questions, you will begin an opportunity after this, done with the examination.
Now, is it practical to plant pine trees immediately around the wellhead?
No, it's not.
Why is that?
You know, it's a gravel working surface and quite honestly, if a tree branches and things fall, it would be a safety issue.
So is there an issue with the trees surviving in that kind of scenario?
Yeah, I would consider.
And what if, would there be any value in planting pine trees off the pad? For example, facing towards L nine and L ten, or L ten and L nine down below the pad?
I don't believe so because the topography drops off, so for a tree to really provide screening from these vantage points, they would have to be relatively tall.
Now, back on L five, that's the one that you noted is near the access drive, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is Olympus willing to develop a pine tree planting plan that would provide for pine trees near the road and then along the access drive?
There they are.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Blickendorfer, Mr. Lucas. Now would be the time that we would begin the cross-examination, do we wanna break now, or do you wanna? Before we move into the cross-examination, we'll let the objectors have time to kind of take care of their questions and then we'll jump back in in five minutes, thanks. All right, if you could, if you could get to your seats, we're going to go ahead and we're going to start the objective cross-examination. Looks like we should just want to do something first. So we are still off the record, but we are, we do want to go off the record. So if everyone can quiet down, so we can start back up. All right, we are going back on the record. Mr. Lucas?
Yeah, one other matter, this isn't so much a, it doesn't require testimony from Mr. Blickenderfer, but may you eliminate some questions on cross-examination. Is the access road, there's the testimony about the access road and associated limited disturbances in relation to the access road. Olympus' position is that the access road does not count and is not included within the definition of deep wellsite for purposes of six hundred and fifty foot setback required. That said, we will stipulate that the access road and its associated limits of disturbance are within six hundred and fifty feet of several buildings. So we hope we obviate the need to ask any questions about that. Since we're stipulating that that's the case and that it's just a legal question for the board in terms of whether that access road counts for purposes of six hundred and fifty foot requirement.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that stipulation and that information and hopefully everyone was able to hear that. And what we're going to do now is called, what's called cross-examination for those individuals who did not participate in the Dionysus well. And how cross-examination works is that party objectors, those individuals who have been given party status by the board, will have an opportunity to ask questions of the witness. The questions are limited to the testimony given by the witness on direct examination. And as well as, you know, we'll give a little leeway for related matters, but you know, primarily, what you need to be asking is, you know, questions about the prior testimony that's already been elicited. What this is not an opportunity to do is to provide your own testimony because you will be given an opportunity, once the applicant's case is closed, to make your own statements, present your own witness, I'm sorry, present your own evidence, present your own witnesses. So this is simply questions of this witness based on his direct testimony. So with that said, are we going to? It looks like we're going to lead off with Mr. Resinetti, so I'll ask him to identify himself for the record. And he can go ahead and proceed with asking his questions.
Hi, I'm Timothy Resinetti on behalf of Crowd. I think to the witness, and so I believe, since I haven't had a chance to review the entire binder, that what I'm putting in front of you may already be in evidence as a part of this binder. It looks like the application form is in here as, is it tab one? So it's a part of what I've handed you is Olympus exhibit A, tab one. Is that the way you're referring to it, Mr. Lucas?
This does not seem to be consistent with what's in Olympus tab A1.
Well then, should we refer to this as Crowd exhibit two, if one is our standing exhibit that we submitted?
Yes, that, Mr. Resinetti, that will be fine. I just want to make sure we all knew, you know, specifically what it is, the word, the document that we're all discussing. So if it's potentially inconsistent with what Olympus has submitted, let's make it clear that this is a separate exhibit submitted by Crowd. And again, you'll have to establish that if it is different, that Mr. Blickenderfer, you know, had some role in preparing it. So I assume we're going to build that foundation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, how, Mr. Blickenderfer, how are you, how are you, Mr. Resinetti?
Good. Do you have the document in front of you that I've passed? I'm sorry, I only did three because I thought this was going to, the entirety of this was going to be in evidence already. But I believe that Mr. Rob, your associate has it, okay. So what I believe this is, Mr. Blickenderfer, is the cover page is a letter sent by Michael Baker to West Deer Township, basically saying that, well, let me just ask my question. Is it true that a letter dated October 30th, 2019, in a letter dated October 30th, 2019, Michael Baker, National, submitted conditional use application for the Leta well pad project to West Deer Township on behalf of Olympus Energy?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I believe this is, this is evidence of that letter. Is it also true that in that same letter at the bottom, it appears that you, from your firm, was listed as a contact to answer any questions?
That's correct.
Okay. Did that application include the Leta project narrative? Which I understand was different when it was submitted and now is considered Olympus exhibit A, tab three?
Are you referring to the one that we added to the record tonight, or whether or not there was a narrative in the application originally?
Was there a narrative in the application originally?
I believe so.
Okay. Can we, can we go to the next page of the application? Let's, can we match this up to the tab lines? Because I believe it's going to be same. I'm only going to ask a few questions on it.
Mr. Resinetti, if I could, are we able to follow along? Do you have?
Yes. So now that I'm on here, sorry, I should be working better with my partner here. So let's just look at the things, if we could go to the bottom of this page. So in the, in the area where the percentage of lot coverage is listed, can you confirm that on your current, that your own exhibit, tab one, the, I can bring it over to you. The percentage of lot coverage is still thirty-six percent?
Uh, that's, yeah, that's what's in the form.
I believe that's the same.
That's the same.
Now, on the, the next page at the top, well, one more question. Do you happen to know what the maximum allowable lot coverage is for the industrial district?
I don't, I don't.
We can go to the next page, please. So at the top in the zoning district area, the zoning district is listed as industrial, and I believe that's the same on the tab one exhibit.
I'm sure it is.
Okay. Could you confirm? Is the entire site contained within the industrial district?
I need to go back and look. I presume it is.
Is the entire site contained within the parcel listed on the previous page? That was the parcel Mr. Rob identified at the beginning of the hearing?
It splits two parcels.
It splits two parcels. Okay. If we could go to the number two. I'm going to introduce now what would be Crowd three. This was the original setback exhibit submitted with the application, but I understand has changed. So just to confirm here, Mr. Blickenderfer, I know- So, just to confirm here, Mr. Blickenderfer, I know the setback exhibit changed, but the design of the site itself has not changed, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, if you could zoom in to the northwest of the Wellpad, please? Mr. Blickenderfer, is it true that there is a wet pond and associated structures proposed for the Leno site on a parcel adjacent to the parcel identified in the application?
That's correct.
Do you happen to know what zoning district the adjacent lot is?
I do not.
Okay. So, based on this drawing, it appears there's no side yard setback left between the joint parcels, is that correct?
I have to look at the ordinance, if you mean that it crosses the property line, then yes.
Okay, so basically, there's, there's a feature of the Leno site that spans the properties with no open space in between, is that, is that a true statement?
That's a true statement.
And if we could go to the number three now, please? This will be Crowd Four, this is a partial portion of the original project narrative, I don't believe the part we're talking about has changed, but we'll verify. If we could go to the bottom of this page, section, we guess it's H. Mr. Lucas, would it be easier if I shared this copy with Mr. Blickenderfer, just so we can verify that things haven't changed?
Sure.
So, I'm gonna ask you questions about section H, which talks about the access drive and streets. So, in the bottom of section eight, is it correct and still true with the newly submitted narrative, that this states that the access road must be wider than thirty, than the 30 foot maximum allowed by the zoning ordinance due to PENDOT requirements?
That's correct.
Now, what I'm offering into evidence now will be Crowd Five, I believe is the number we're on. I would like to introduce a PENDOT publication titled Highway Occupancy Permit Operations Manual. I included an appendix C4, which is titled Minimum Use Driveway Design for Unconventional Gas Drilling and Hydro Fracking Well Sites. Mr. Blickenderfer, do you agree that this is the publication a designer or permitee would refer to for PENDOT requirements for Wellpad access roads?
That's correct.
If we could go to the next page, please? On page C4-1, do you agree that this appendix covers the minimum use driveway design for unconventional gas drilling and hydro fracking well sites that is applicable to the Leno access road?
That's correct.
Uh, the next page, please, C4-2. Okay, on page C4-2, in the area where the stop sign symbol is shown toward the center of the page, do you agree that the minimum width given by the PENDOT requirement is 24 feet? You might have to look at the screen.
Oh, hard to read, but I'm familiar with this, it is.
It is 24, okay. Then, do you agree that citing PENDOT requirements is a justification for the access road being wider than 30 feet, is that a minimum misleading?
I would need to go back and look at the plans, see what we get there, but the driveway entrance itself has, is permitted by PENDOT, and therefore had to meet these exact requirements.
Okay, if we could go back to the project narrative, which you're welcome to look at in that binder, that's section H on page, I believe it's 15. Would you read, I believe it's the final sentence? It starts with "in order to," or you can read the whole section if you'd like, but...
No, thanks. In order to provide the safe ingress and egress of large vehicle traffic from the Wellpad, and to comply with PENDOT requirements for Wellpad traffic, the access road must be wider than 30 feet in width as specified in zoning ordinance 120, 210, dash, 1K each for.
And I believe you testified earlier that the width of the access road varied between 24 feet, and was it 34, 35 feet, something to that effect?
34.
34, okay. So, I'll ask you the question again, and do you agree that citing, well, do you agree that this narrative cites PENDOT requirements as a reason why the access road has to be wider than 34 feet, or than 30 feet?
Partially, correct.
Partially, at least in part, correct. So then, do you agree that citing PENDOT requirements is a justification for the access road being wider than 30 feet, is that a minimum misleading?
No.
You do not?
Go ahead.
No, I do not, because, you know, remember, we've got trucks coming in and out here, you know, safety is obviously utmost important, so if we get a vehicle that stops on the access road and we need to be able to pass, we need areas for that to happen. So, on a strict street with two-way traffic, 20, it's less than 30 feet, may work, but in a situation like this, where, you know, we may have a truck pulled to the side, need to get around, then obviously another lane is required.
So, does that fall more within the, for safe ingress and egress of large vehicles, rather than PENDOT requirements, or is...
It would.
Okay, so is there a PENDOT requirement that you're aware of, that would require the access road to be wider than a 30 foot?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. And one last question on this, are you aware if Olympus has sought a variance or a hardship based on that, I believe that it's a self-admitted non-compliance?
I'm not aware.
Okay. If we could go to page 10 of this, please? So, I believe this will be Crowd Six, this is another page from the original project narrative submitted by Olympus. I know there are differences with the revised narrative. Is it still paragraph scheme or letter scheme, the setback section?
It is, but it's been substantially revised.
Agreed. Can we please read section C on this page of Crowd Exhibit, was it six that I left off at? The highlighted parts will suffice, but if you wanna go further, that's up to you.
Oh, that gets most of them, so, the zoning ordinance imposes a 650 foot setback requirement from all pre-existing buildings, and it points out the code, references the code. This radius can be viewed at Tab Four, Exhibit F. As indicated by Tab Four, Exhibit F, there are structures within 650 foot setback radius on tax parcel 1668-M, it goes on the AMD property.
Yeah.
The zoning ordinance requires a setback from property lines and streets of 1.5 times the drilling requirement.
If you just wanna read that final highlighted sentence, or you could continue reading the whole thing, but...
Thank you. Hex operations cannot be moved...
So, I ask him to jump down to the, starting with Hex's operations.
Hex's operations cannot be moved in such a way as to satisfy the setback requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Restanetti, or Mr. Blickenderfer maybe would be better off here, can you clarify for us, there's a reference to the AMD property, we've seen a setback map a couple of times, can someone clarify for us?
We're going to that next, so, it's, I believe Mr. Blickenderfer referred to it as the Clean Streams owned property?
That's, thank you, that's helpful, is that correct, Mr. Blickenderfer?
That's correct, thank you.
So, if we could go back to the setback exhibit. If you could pull out a little bit to capture the site and the Clean Streams property?
And again, just for, just so it's clear for the record, because this is gonna get a little confusing after the fact, when you say the setback exhibit, which is Crowd Exhibit Two, this is not the updated version, is that correct?
Correct, is there some way you'd like me to refer to it?
I think, I think you did fine, I just wanna make sure for everyone who's following along here, that we're all talking about the same thing. I'm sorry, that's Crowd Three.
Yeah, the standing exhibits.
I don't know where this is going, but to eliminate confusion here, and to posit, I think, the potential objection, to the extent there's gonna be a line of questioning about setbacks from structures on the Clean Streams Foundation property, Mr. Blickenderfer has testified that that was eliminated at Olympus' direction, and the next witness is going to testify with respect to that, so he has not testified at all with respect to anything that's on the Clean Streams Foundation property, and to the extent there are any questions of him related to that, I'm going to object as being beyond the scope of his direct...
I haven't asked any questions yet, so, then can we just see as we go?
And I will say, you know, Mr. Blickenderfer is not able to answer a question, he can certainly say that he could tell us as much.
Thank you. So now we're looking at Olympus' original setback exhibit, is this the setback exhibit that was referenced in the narrative that you just read from? That the original...
The original narrative.
Yes, sorry, I'll try to go one at a time. Which structures are indicated as being within the 650 foot radius on the AMD or Clean Streams property, which would have prevented Olympus from satisfying the setback requirement? Do you have a pointer?
Uh, that would be this setback on here for this structure.
Okay, the narrative used the word, I believe it was plural, if reference buildings, is there more than that building or structure that would be admitted to be less than 650 feet?
And before you, before you answer that question, because we just saw a pointer that's not gonna show up in the transcript, Mr. Blickenderfer, can you just explain a little bit what you pointed out on the drawing?
There's a rectangle in the drawing, just to the west of the area labeled existing treatment pond, from which a leader originates and points to a 650 foot setback arc across the path, thank you.
And I believe you testified that, I believe your words were, that Mr. Lucas told you to remove those from the setback exhibit, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you tell me why you originally included them?
Because they showed up as a structure on this, on the drawing, the GIS data we used to create this.
Okay, so your determination was made via GIS information?
That's correct.
Have you...
That's correct.
Have you ever been to the site?
I have been to the site.
Have you seen those buildings?
Object's into the form of the question, specifically the reference that it's...
I'm sure the board is able to make their own interpretation as to what the building is, so...
Yeah, we'll overrule the objection, but understand that this is not a, you know, this is not a determination as to whether something is a structure or a building under the zoning code, I think we understand the purpose of the question. It was, I think, have you, did you see the structures, buildings, whatever you wanna call them?
I've seen it, yes.
Do you happen to know if they're still there?
They are there.
Okay. I believe I've lost that, if we could go to number four? So, I believe this will be Crowd Exhibit, am I on seven? Seven, okay. This is an extract of Olympus' ESCGP 3D notice of intent for coverage.
Who is doing that? With the mic? That noise, it's pounding you, uh...
It could be me, I might be breathing heavy, I'm sorry. Do I have one by... You could probably read from the binder, can you find it?
At this point, the witness is being asked to read something from the ESCGP, app notice of intent for coverage, this is a document submitted to DEP and approved by DEP, and Mr. Blickenderfer specifically has not testified at all with respect to the ESCGP, so we object to any line of questioning related to the ESCGP as being beyond the scope of his direct testimony, whether there are reasons that Crowd wants to, as part of their case, make arguments based on this document, we're certainly entitled to do that, but Mr. Blickenderfer, I did not testify regarding the ESCGP, we object to any questioning on it.
Mr. Restanetti, can you help us understand how this testimony is going to be tied into the township zoning requirements?
So, I'm not gonna specifically ask any erosion and sedimentation control problems or questions about how it was calculated, or drainage, or anything like that, but this makes specific reference, references to features of the site, and Mr. Blickenderfer did actually present drawings that were, I believe he referred to, from the ESCGP 3, further, his letter of transmittal, well, one thing, Michael Baker International is the company that prepared the entire ESCGP 3, so it's the only representative that could possibly answer questions about it, if we're not asked, allowed to ask questions, I would ask that it be stricken from the record entirely, ESCGP 3, because if it's included as an exhibit, it was prepared by the applicant's firm, and he submitted a letter saying ask him any questions about what was submitted, it seems relevant that there's a foundation, he can answer those questions that are gonna be specifically related to the ordinance.
Yeah, I don't disagree that just because, you know, this is the only opportunity for you to ask questions, but it's real, it's gonna, the scope is going to be very restricted, it's got, it's got to relate to the township zoning regulations, because as we discussed early on, and we probably will discuss again, you know, this is a separate application for relief that's been submitted to a different entity for approval, has been approved, so to the extent that you have questions that relate to the zoning ordinance, we can give you some leeway, but not... give you some leeway, but not a whole lot, Mr. Restnety.
Again, same objection.
Yes.
We would just reiterate the same objection. I mean, if the Crowd purpose would take by any doubt of this document and make some argument bootstrap to the requirements of the ordinance, they can certainly attempt to do that, but it's really beyond the scope of Mr. Blickenderfer's testimony.
Thank you. We'll note your objection for the record, and again, Mr. Restnety, we're going to stay tight to zoning, relevant issues only.
Thank you, sir. If you could go to page 129, please. So, would you please read that first paragraph under Section 1.0, Project Description?
Huntley &amp; Huntley Energy Exploration LLC, Hex, is proposing the Leto Wellpad project, which consists of a 350-foot by 500-foot well pad and approximately 1,038-foot-long permanent well pad access road. Additional facilities at the site include stockpiles, erosion and sedimentation controls, and post-construction stormwater management facilities. The proposed project is located in West Deer Township, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, referred to the site location map provided with this permanent application.
Thank you. If we could go to five for the ESCGP 3 drawing? So, this drawing should be included in, could you tell me what exhibit of Olympus' is? Was it Tab 8? Is that what I thought correctly?
That's up to you. You have to tell us what you're referring to.
Yeah, it's Tab 8. I don't think we need this anymore. So, just to be clear, have the drives in the ESCGP 3 changed since they were originally submitted to the township back in 2019?
No.
So, these should still be accurate. We'll refer to them as Olympus Exhibit A, Tab 8. Correction, these are Olympus Exhibit A, Tab 4, Exhibit A. These are drawings titled Leto Wellpad Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan, and we're going to be looking at Sheets 3 and 4. If you could go to Sheet 4, which should be the next page, please? I want to see the area along Oak Road. Could you go to the next page? Okay, if we could get real close in to the entrance along Oak Road? A little to the right and down. Thank you. So, I want to ask you questions about this stockpile that's pointed out along Oak Road. Do the, does the stockpile, or, so the thing you had just read mentioned additional facilities at the site include stockpiles? So, do the stockpile facilities include the stockpile over the Long Oak Road on Sheet 4 of 17?
No, I would not. Two separate facilities.
So, the stockpile facilities refers to a different facility from the narrative you just read?
That's correct. Those were the large soil stockpiles near the site, for topsoil, you know, other things that you would not want to build into construction, and then ultimately for the topsoil will be put back over the graded slopes.
Okay. Is there a material that's kept in the stockpile?
In this particular stockpile?
In this particular stockpile adjacent to Oak Road?
Yeah, so, just to clarify earlier testimony, the paved entrance to the road, that's a, that's a, once the construction's complete, that area gets paved. Prior to that, while there's earth disturbance going on, this is a rock construction entrance that eliminates any mud or dirt from being tracked onto the roadway. This is much larger rock, up to maybe four inches, and that needs to be refreshed as it's used. So, what a contractor will do is take this rock material, place it to the side of the entrance, so that whenever it becomes, you know, soiled or whatever, they can use that pile then to refresh the construction entrance.
So, that, the material then is rock? Is that correct?
It is.
And it will be there at least temporarily, right?
Yes.
And it's there, is it down to the construction of the well site? Is that true?
I'll just check to the form of the question, and again, we've stipulated that the access road and anything associated with it is within 650 feet of buildings. So, I don't think there's any need for, in this regard.
Yeah, I think we'll sustain that objection, Mr. Restnety. I think the stipulation previously issued by Olympus Commerce is line of questioning.
Will this material be screened in any way?
Same objection.
Yeah, Mr. Restnety, I mean, I think the, if you're, if you're, if your point is, you know, that the access road and associated materials are within 650 feet of a building as that is defined in the zoning code, I believe that Olympus has already stipulated that is the case. Obviously, they don't agree that that's a violation, but they agree that that's the case. So, I think we can save ourselves some time, unless there was another point you wanted to make beyond that.
Well, I believe their stipulation was the access road itself, not necessarily everything that was associated with it. So, maybe I could cover this in one question?
Well, why don't I just ask the, why don't we ask Olympus if they're stipulating as to the associated materials, including the rock construction access?
Yes.
And any facilities associated with the access road?
What is that, what is that?
What does he mean? Yeah. That's our issue.
How about, does any structures associated with the access road?
And what you see on the drawing related to the access road, Olympus stipulates is within 650 feet of buildings. That's quite obvious.
Okay, I believe we can move a little bit forward then, and I believe you testified already that the filter stocks along the site, which I assume are what you mentioned as erosion and sediment control facilities in your, in the project narrative, already admitted these are less than 650 feet from buildings, from homes, businesses, whatever. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, some of the post-stormwater construction facilities. If we could zoom or grab it and pull it up a little bit, so a little to the right. Just to be fully inclusive, we're talking about Calvert 1. If we could go up a little bit more, closer to the pad, a little left. Left more, please. So, there's a Calvert 2 that I'm not sure, are we considering that associated with the access road as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Although, for the record, his testimony was, there doesn't come a point where the access road near the well pad is beyond 650 feet, so.
And just so we're clear, is there any chance any of these things would get constructed or installed if Leto does not get approved or constructed?
I don't understand the question. If it doesn't get approved, will we build it? Obviously not.
All right, and they are all man-made, so I believe we can agree on that. If you could go to seven, please. So, what I'm introducing as, I believe Crowd's 8, and I'm not going to ask you any questions about the emergency response plan in and of itself, this is more making use of the map that was provided?
I'm going to pause objection, he's had absolutely no testimony about the emergency response plan. This is clearly beyond the scope of the direct testimony.
So, this is related specifically to the setback exhibit? I want to try to match something up from here to the setback exhibit, and I want to try to anyway.
Can I, can I ask you, you know, where, is there a provision in the zoning code that requires the, this drawing to match up with the setback? Or you have to help me understand?
So, what I'm trying to figure out is, if you could pull back a little bit, please, to show the legend, there's something in the legend of this called a helipad location. So, I would like help from Mr. Blickenderfer trying to locate where that would be on the setback exhibit, and I believe we can do it through some landmarks that are included on both maps or both drawings.
Uh, just.
Same objection.
Well, if Mr. Blickenderfer has information as to the location of a helipad, if there is such a helipad planned, he can answer the question. If not, obviously, he's not going to be able to, but why don't you go, Mr. Restnety?
Okay. Just to try to see if we can match this up to to Olympus' new exhibit, or their binder?
Before we get too far down that road, could you ask Mr. Blickenderfer just some preliminary questions to see if he has any information about a helipad?
Sure, sure, sure. So, in front of you is a drawing described as the emergency response plan map for the Leto Wellpad. The legend indicates the helipad is shown as a red circle with an X inscribed in it. Do you see that in the legend?
Yes.
Okay. And do you see the same symbol in the map above to the southwest of the Leto Wellpad?
Yes.
Okay, do you agree that the symbol is centered on a pre-existing road? If you could zoom in on that symbol there, please? I believe it's depicted on, centered on a pre-existing road within the parcel Leto itself is proposed to be constructed on, and it's located to the southwest of the well pad itself. Do you agree that it appears to be centered on that existing road? I know that on survey drawings necessarily.
Yes, that's a general location.
Okay, if we could go back to 2, that's the setback exhibit. Are you, are you able to identify the pre-existing road on the setback exhibit to the southwest of the Leto Wellpad? I believe it's this dashed line.
I'm on fire with this drawing, so it's going to be a second.
Sure.
It's really hard to read.
We could look at it on your setback drawing, if you'd like.
I think it's right here.
Yes, I agree. So, the pre-existing road where the helipad appears to be centered over, that's depicted on this dashed line on the setback exhibit to the southwest of the well pad, do you agree that the entire road where the helipad is proposed to be located, or at least where it's depicted, is less than 650 feet from homes or businesses based on the 650-foot arcs that are pulled on the setback exhibit? If you want, we can go back and look at that ERP map a little closer.
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's in front of me. Okay, if you could go back to 4, please. Why don't you want to go to page 408? A tab to the end of the Leto Wellpad ESCGP 3 that you submitted to township visiting said is a table that appears to show Olympus' compliance history with applicable state laws and regulations for the township area.
Mr. Restnety, you're going to have to give us an upper proof here. What, where are we going with this? Because you had a lot of latitude, and we want to keep this moving.
I have five questions. These relate to Mr. Blickenderfer's experience as a professional engineer in designing well pads.
So, you're asking about the location of a helipad to so?
It's a new topic.
So, we're done with the helipad?
We're done with the helipad.
Okay.
This is related to Mr. Blickenderfer's experience as a professional engineer designing well sites, and how they relate to what I would believe would be some health and safety concerns, or at least some history of the operator that's included as an exhibit.
Clearly beyond the scope of the direct here.
But, I mean, do you, are you suggesting that Mr. Blickenderfer has specific personal knowledge as to these incidents?
I, I'm not.
Okay, well, I'm not sure these are appropriate questions for him. There's certainly, if you'd like to make them part of your case in chief, we could certainly consider it at that time, but I'm going to sustain the objection issued by Mr. Lucas.
So, just to be clear, you're not allowing me to ask questions about exhibits that were, parts of their exhibits that were submitted into the record that were prepared by Mr. Blickenderfer's firm?
I think you've conceded, Mr. Blickenderfer can correct us if we're both wrong, that he has personal knowledge of these incidents, but if he doesn't, first of all, I agree that we're far outside the scope of the direct, understanding that these were submitted by Michael Baker, so we've given you the ability to ask questions about these documents. However, if Mr. Blickenderfer doesn't have personal knowledge of these incidents, he's not the appropriate person to opine generally on Olympus' compliance issues.
If I could ask him maybe a couple of questions about if he knows how this was prepared, would that mean that's by the foundation?
We're going to sustain the objection, you need to move on, Mr. Restnety.
Okay, so, just a general question here. Are plantings or screenings proposed adjacent to existing residential, residentially developed property that includes at least a six-foot-high wood or metal screening fence?
No.
Okay. Has a lighting plan been submitted that shows how many foot candles light originating from the site will be reduced to at the perimeter of property lines?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Then, any other questions you need? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Restnety. Mr. Lucas, do you have redirect for Mr. Blickenderfer?
We have no further questions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Mr. Blickender, there may be some other party objectors who have questions, so we'll go ahead and move on to our next objector. Ms. Austin, if you could come on up, state your name for the record and ask your questions.
Victoria Austin, 19 Hemlock Street, Beardenford.
Ms. Austin, we have a theory as to why maybe there's some noises coming from that remote. If you want to keep holding it towards the higher, the top portion of the microphone, we can...
Is that good?
Yeah, I think that'll work just fine, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Blickender. Did you take the photos on Hemlock Street?
I did not.
Have you been on Hemlock Street?
I have, just this past week.
Okay. A question on the proposed well site and the water treatment site, are they approximately the same elevation that Ploton Land?
Roughly, the well pad is on the...
Roughly?
Yeah.
Okay. The pictures from Hemlock Street, can we get those back up? I wish that was Hemlock Street. L1 sightline profile? When you were on Hemlock Street, would you say that Hemlock Street is level in elevation, or are there changes in elevation on that street?
From this location in the other direction, it rises.
As it's...
As you look away from this location, the street rises.
And did you find that Hemlock Street is more or less a horseshoe that connects to Center Street?
That's right.
Would you say that these were taken at the lowest part of Hemlock Street? Where there's more or less a horseshoe. Where the horseshoe is, is closest to the homes that are adjacent to the site.
I think this is on the higher side, but you would know better. It's on the eastern side.
Right, but this is the lowest portion of Hemlock, as it goes downhill?
That's correct.
Okay. And the homes that are down there would have to look uphill, up in elevation, to see the line of sight where the gas and oil facility would be, right?
That's right.
Okay, well, further up Hemlock Street where the homes are more elevated, there's a straight sightline to the area where the gas and oil site would be and to the water treatment plant. I can look out my kitchen window and see the water treatment plant. Therefore, there should be site photos from further up elevation on Hemlock Street because there would be a straight line of view to, I can see the water treatment plant, so I obviously would get a beautiful view of the gas and oil site.
I certainly trust your opinion, and it does raise, and there may be something that I missed while I was...
Yeah, I'm one kind of a straight line of sight to those facilities, so I just want to say that it's not going to be obscured from all of the residences there. In fact, some of them will have to look at it 24/7 for the rest of their lives.
Ms. Austin, remember, you're asking questions rather than testimony.
Okay. Would people have to look at that if they have a straight line of sight to that, from an elevated area of Hemlock Street? Can I assume that if I concede that water treatment plant, I would probably see the gas and oil plant? Since they are going to be about the same elevation?
I mean, I have to see it, but it makes logical sense, yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Austin, any redirect, Mr. Lucas?
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Blickender, what's the distance where the L1 sightline profile, what's the distance from that point to where the well has to be located?
1,032 feet.
So that's in excess of three football fields, am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, this is, to the right on the photo on your right, is the home that would be in the closest proximity on Hemlock Street. So I'm not sure that it's...
Yeah, are we asking a question, Ms. Austin?
Okay, if I'm 800, less than 800 feet from the well site, that house is actually in closer proximity, so would you agree that that would not be over 1,000 feet?
That distance is taken from where this photo was taken to the wellheads, which are some distance on the well site itself.
Okay, to the wellhead, but not to the well site?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, are there any other party objectors who would like to cross-examine Mr. Blickender? Uh, Mr. Reer?
Oh, okay, you want to point it?
There you go.
Hi, Mrs. Blickender, thank you for being here and everybody else who's standing for this. I'm going to pick you up, you're going to sit down, not that I'm asking any questions.
Mr. Reer, make sure you identify yourself so our court reporter knows who speaks.
I would. I'm going to just set just a very comfortable... Jackard, 37 Corbury Wood Lane, Kinstonia 15044. You didn't use all that in my last one? No. Could I ask you to go back to the first diagram that shows all the line of sight site? And I just want to ask, it appears to me, and I know it's sort of hard to read, that L9 and L10 are taken along Middle Road Extension.
That's correct.
Okay, there were we. And according to, let me just turn on the real tape, if you would flip over to, wait, let me look at here one second, to the location L9, the detail of that. And, to help the pardon me, I'm very ignorant online stuff, so I do go out and sub this. But I'm curious, this is the drawing you pointed out earlier, correct, from 2018, that shows the pad over here.
That's correct.
Okay. One question I have, you mentioned, of course, the well head would be very difficult to see at that distance, because we just get 2,322 feet, roughly. But I'm just curious about something that I don't understand. It shows this dashed line here, is that the line of sight?
That's the line of sight, correct.
Okay, it shows line of sight going across the pad about 30 feet above the top of the pad, however, I can actually see the sight. Is there a reason for why it would show a line of sight higher than the pad when I can actually see it in that drawing?
I don't, I mean, that line of sight distance does certainly mean to the top of the wellhead in the strong.
Okay, because obviously I can see it. Okay, my other question then is, this later drawing, taking, photograph, I actually know where it is, taken in February 2020 for this month, but I see a telephone pole here that doesn't exist here, and obviously, I don't see the pad, it's clear. Do you have any idea why this picture is taken at a different location than this one, even though they're both L9 and supposed to be from the same site?
It would have just been the direction that the photograph was taken. That telephone pole in this picture, I believe, is kind of right here.
Okay, so would you agree that this picture, either accidentally or whatever reason, does not actually show what this picture shows?
That's correct.
And that if, would it be safe to assume that at this time of year, if that photo was taken in the same location, the well pad would probably be much clearer to see?
At least that's clear, but the well pad is going to be in this clearing, so, but honestly, I don't think that leaves matter much in this case.
Okay, so it will be visible anytime.
That's correct.
Okay, can I ask you another question? Even though the sightline shows 30 feet, and I can clearly see the pad, well, the well head will only be whatever they are, eight or 10 feet tall. How tall is the drilling rig, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, so that would be the question for the person who...
That's correct.
Would you agree, though, that it's going to be at least over...
It'll be more than eight feet.
Yes. And do you know, are the drilling rigs typically lit?
I... We're going to witness it.
This was beyond his scope to have a witness.
Okay, now I'll take that off the table. Okay, that's my question about this. Could you go back again to the first one that showed the sightline? And I have a question, L10 is this one taken here? Now, one thing, I'm very promotor this road, I travel all the time. How do you pick sightlines?
Well, in this case, you know, we look for the areas that we're most likely to be able to view the well pad.
Okay. And the reason I ask, because I don't know if anybody can see, it's hard to see in this stuff, but right where this location is chosen, there happens to be a clump of trees here, just over from it is not. It's a few, yeah, it's a little clear. Could you go to L10, please? Now, the distance is very close to the same, just around the bend. Would you agree that this line of sight actually shows the top of the well pad?
It does.
Okay. Would you agree that this picture taken September, obviously you can't see anything, there's trees right beside it?
That's correct.
Okay, that's September, I think. Would you agree that this picture here does not appear to be quite in the same location for one major reason? There's no guardrail over here, there's a guardrail here.
And I mean, it certainly looks different.
Yeah. And I guess my question is, you know, I'm already seeing two pictures that appear to have been taken in different locations, even though the sightlines are showing the same location. So I'm sort of wondering, you know, how do I trust that when I'm sitting here and when I'm sitting here, we're actually the same thing?
Can you flip back to the location?
But this is both L10.
Beyond these specific points that these photos were taken, you know, this wrote kind of, the topography allows you basically to see the pad from between these two locations. Once you start to go beyond L10, there starts to be more tree cover and the topography starts to dim, and then you can't see, you can't see the pad from that location. So I can, based on my site visit, I would believe that you'd be able to see the pad between those two points.
And would you also, based on your site visit, even though it is not shown here, would you agree that the topography would actually allow you to see this well pad from probably along the length here, because this whole field above something in the road at about the same elevation?
Honestly, I can't, I can't remember.
And then I'll just ask, do you remember, where you said you do remember in dibs, that it actually goes back up to about the same or higher elevation right up here, which would also allow you to see the pad across these fields?
When I drove that, I was, you know, just watching the window to see if I could find another place that looked like there's potential to see the pad. I didn't see it, obviously, you travel this road much more than I do, maybe there isn't...
Yeah, I would like, I would like one, obviously. One last question here, I think the last one. If you could go back to L10 again, please? And I'm going to, and actually, go back to L9, I suppose. In addition, in fact, these are obviously in two different locations, because the telephone pole is not here, maybe it's here. Would you agree that this one was actually focused a little higher to make it more visible, and this one looks like it's focused more down at the road, and so you don't see as far because you're looking at the road as opposed to a little higher at this one?
I guess, but I mean, I agree that we're going to see the pad from this location regardless of what this photo says.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because obviously, somebody decided that there would be some value in providing newer photos, but it seems like in a number of locations, in a number of photos, particularly this one, it appears to purposely not show as much information to me, and so... Okay, let me double check my notes, see if I have any other questions, and... I think that was all the question I had for Mr. Blickender.
Thank you, Mr. Reer. Is there anyone else, any other party objectors have questions for Mr. Blickender? I'm sorry, Mr. Lucas, do you have any redirect?
No.
Any other questions? Yes, sir, come on up, please identify yourself.
Hello, my name's Jeremy Kane, I'm 233 Oak Road. I'll be pretty careful, I promise. My question has to do with travel on Oak Road, so can you speak to that as far as...
We'll have a full traffic study, I'm sorry. We'll have a full traffic study that's presented as part of this hearing, and I would guess that that's where your question...
Yeah, it's going to be a lot on frequency, time of day...
That testimony will come...
That's coming?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, can I ask you one other question? I think earlier, did you mention, is there a weight limit on Oak Road?
No, there's not, I don't believe.
Ten ton. Yeah, is there three signs at the bottom of Oak Road that state a 10-ton weight limit? And I encourage everyone to take pictures of those before they magically maybe get taken down.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Blickender? Well, Mr. Lucas, any redirect?
No.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Blickender before we set him free? Okay, thank you for your time, Mr. Blickender. Okay, we are now at 8:34, so I guess we're going to move on to our applicant's next witness.
Thank you. Our next witness will be Scott Rasmusen, and my colleague, Mike Cornes, will examine him.
Thank you. Mr. Rasmusen, you were sworn in earlier when everyone was sworn in, is that correct?
Yes, officer.
Can you please give your name and your position to the board of the court.
Scott Rasmusen, Principal with Civil and Environmental Consultants. R-A-S as in Sam, M-U-S-S-E-N as in Nancy.
Now, Mr. Rasmusen, can you give just an overview of your education and your current performance?
Bachelor of Science degree in chemistry from Syracuse University, Bachelor of Science in environmental chemistry at State University in New York, and a master's in environmental pollution control from Penn State. Been in the consulting industry since I graduated from Penn State in 1983. I also, from 2006 to 2018, worked for Consol Energy in their environmental group, starting as the environmental auditor and finishing as the manager of Legacy's property.
And as such, I have just handed you a document to be regarded as Exhibit E, Olympus Exhibit E. Can you just give some more explanation of what this document is?
Yeah, this is my CV, goes through my... Yeah, this is my CV, goes through my thirty-two years of experience in general environmental management, and also has project experience specific to the coal industry and water management in general.
Now, you said that you have experience with legacy treatment, can you just give a brief explanation of what that is?
Sure, I look at principally mining-related discharges, working for clients who are trying to improve their system, and in certain instances, able to go to a passive system rather than active system, you know, in an effort to save costs. Also looking at wider range for coal companies who have numerous outlets to try to go through their water treatment program to improve efficiencies.
So as part of that, you would focus on mining impacted discharges, water chemistry, and recommendations for improvement, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Now, you were here earlier, so you heard some of the earlier testimony, referred to the Clean Streams Foundation property. Are you familiar with this property?
Yes, sir.
Can you give an overview of what exactly the property that you've been talking about is?
The Clean Streams property is a mine drainage, a former mine drainage facility, built to initially de-water and treat the water from de-watering this, the mine, so the company that owned the mine could then better mine the Russellton Mine, which is down dipped from this mine. Built in the nineteen sixties, eventually became used to treat acid mine drainage, to allow it to be discharged. Right around nineteen, sorry, right around two thousand and sixteen.
I have an objection if I could put in, I'm sorry, sir. I don't think we have...
Mr. Rasmussen, hold on, first off, if you're going to speak, we need you to do it in a microphone.
Right.
Right, so my objection is, I don't believe we've established the foundation for how Mr. Rasmussen...
Yes.
How he has come to acquire this knowledge? We're getting there, I mean, I'm establishing, and I'm going to be offering him as an expert. So I'm offering, you know, GoDrew's education, he is going to be testifying as to his specific experience with this property, and then I will be offering and he'll obviously be able to question before he's admitted as an expert.
Yeah, Mr. Rasmussen, I'm going to overrule the objection, I think we're going to get there. Go ahead, Mr. Corns.
Thank you. So you've been familiar with, not with this site, but similar sites of this type, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, have you specifically been to this site?
Yes, I have.
So you're familiar with its purpose, as you previously testified to, its history. Are you familiar with the current condition and functionality of the equipment on the site?
Yes, I am.
Now with that, I would like to move to admit into evidence Olympus Exhibit E, which was the CV. I would like to also offer Mr. Rasmussen as an expert in mine closure and water treatment. If anybody has any questions related to qualifications that could do so.
That's what I was just going to say. Thank you, Mr. Corns. Are there any questions regarding the expert witness status of Mr. Rasmussen? Mr. Rasmussen?
This is, my name's Tim Rasmussen. So are you employed by Clean Streams Industries or Clean Streams Foundation in any way?
No, I'm not.
Contractor for them, are you a contractor for a company known as AMD Industries?
No, I'm not.
Have you done work for the DED?
No, I've not worked for the DED.
Okay. Could I ask you, what capacity then took you onto the site? If you weren't brought in by the property owner, by the operator of the facility, or the Department of Environmental Protection, what took you to the site to do whatever work you did?
Olympus brought me onto the site to take a look at these former water treatment facilities.
Olympus took you to the site, not the property owner, not the contractor who operates it. Was the operator there when you were on the site?
Yes.
AMD Industries, is that who was on the site? Okay, I think my, rest of my questions were late so I...
All right, thank you, any other questions regarding the expert witness status of this witness? All right, thank you, we'll go ahead and consider him an expert witness, Mr. Rasmussen, thank you, Mr. Corns, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Rasmussen, just wait one second, we have a document that's being handed out on the bottom of the screen, Olympus Exhibit F. All right, thank you, Mr. Rasmussen, do you recognize this picture, do you recognize what this, what this map was depicted?
Yes.
What is this?
This is the former mine drainage treatment plant. I can go through the particular pieces if you want, but this is a fairly typical acid mine drainage.
I object to the form of the question as characterized in his, a former mine treatment plant?
Mr. Rasmussen, you'll be given an opportunity to cross-examine on that issue, so you can go ahead and move the objection.
So you pre, during a qualification stage, you testified a little bit about your familiarity with the site, but let's go a little bit deeper here and start explaining to the, to this board. There are four boxes on that, on that exhibit app, which are showing specific entities or structures on that, on that site. Can you just go through quickly what those are and what their purpose is, what will be able to help?
The pump station, which is located on photograph, is where the mined water is pumped to the surface. That water, I'm going to back up, when this was operating, that's where the water was pumped to the surface. It would be pumped into what's called a treatment tower, where hydrated lime would be added to the mined water, and then that mixture of lime and mined water would get discharged to the large pond on the right-hand side of the photograph. Now, farther on during the treatment and control of mined water, they determined that lime was no longer needed to, because the mined water was no longer acid. However, in mined water treatment, there are still metals to be dealt with, and the operators put in a peroxide tank in that structure to the upper center of the drawing. And peroxide is used to oxidize iron and manganese. In their oxidized state, they drop out of the water and again drop into the pond. Periodically, the accumulated solids in the ponds would get mixed again with water, and then they would get pumped down into a borehole back into the mined water.
So let's just take a step back, this site was first developed, do you know roughly when the mine was originally developed?
First developed in nineteen sixties.
The mine, the mine itself, the mine itself, not...
Oh, I'm sorry, the mine itself was first developed in nineteen fifteen.
And then in the sixties is when they began being used as a reclamation site, is that correct?
Correct.
So originally, you just testified, the purpose was to treat the discharge of the mine, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so when, do you know when this particular reclamation site stopped operating, or stopped operating?
This place stopped operating in twenty sixteen as a result of the DED realizing that bringing the pool, mined pool up slightly in elevation would allow it to flow into the Russellton Mine, which flows into the Indiana Ole Mine, and there they can treat the water from all three mines centrally and not have to pump water.
I have an objection, it sounds like this is all hearsay, that he's repeating what, I believe he said the DED told him, and I ask that it be stripped from the record.
We're going to overrule that objection, Mr. Rasmussen, but certainly a point you can raise on cross-examination.
So those current discharges are now, those are gravity, is that correct?
Correct.
So what is the advantage of having it being gravity, what are you able to eliminate to it?
Well, from, from a treatment standpoint, if you can gravity drain the mine and then treat it, you're not paying for fairly large and fairly expensive to operate deep mined water pumps. Particularly important when you're a nonprofit whose money source is from a trust fund.
So what, if any, activity occurs at any of these sites today?
The AMD Industries still comes to the site, and they turn on the deep well pump once a month for about two hours. These kinds of pumps have to be exercised, so if it needed to be turned back on, it would actually operate. They run the deep well pump for about two hours, they pump that water directly to the borehole, so it goes back into the mine.
All right, so we're going to go now to each one of these boxes in turn. You just were talking about the pump station that would pump once a month, is that, can you show on the map where that would be?
Correct, it's about thirteen hundred feet away from the...
Mr. Rasmussen, I'm going to hand you a laser pointer, let me show it.
Sorry, it's, sorry, it's about thirteen hundred feet down in this direction. The pump station was located in a low spot in the mine, to be most efficient with pumping water on the mine, back when, when the plant was first built in the nineteen sixties.
And to be clear, there's a box and an arrow, you can't actually see the pump station on this picture, it is too far off the site, right?
That's correct.
So what the arrow is depicting, the direction has been, as you stated, it was about twelve hundred feet from it.
Correct.
Now, we're going to move to the three boxes that are up in the, in sort of the middle of it. The very top box is labeled peroxide tank, and we mentioned a little bit about the peroxide tank earlier, but again, what specific purpose does that do?
The peroxide is used to oxidize the iron and manganese to allow them to come out of solution in the pond if needed.
And is that tank operating today?
No, it is not.
Is there anything in that tank?
No.
Now, if you move to the next box, over to the right, that says treatment tower. What was that structure?
That structure was the hydrated lime silo. So you'd have dry hydrated lime stored in a vertical steel silo. It would fall down to the bottom of cone-shaped silo, be mixed with the incoming mined water, and then that would get discharged into this pond. And eventually, the settled lime and iron sludge would get pumped into, back into the borehole in the mine.
So is that structure operating today?
No.
Is any of the water that is being pumped from the pump station actually making it to the pond?
No.
So once a month it is pumped, but that water goes somewhere else, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so the third box on there is going to say, on Exhibit F, says electric station. What was that structure intended to do?
That structure is, only purpose as far as the treatment of water here is, that structure has a couple of disconnects for a transformer that's located outside. There are also old parts stored there from back when the plant operated. None of those parts have anything to do with the current running of the deep well mine pump.
Mr. Rasmussen, you testified earlier that you have visited this site. When you visited that site, did you take any pictures?
Yes.
Were you present when other pictures were taken?
Uh, yes.
I would object to any photos that Mr. Rasmussen didn't personally take.
Just testifying that they were there when you were taking them, we'll be able to testify that he was at the site personally, to verify that it's the correct depiction of the site.
We'll rule the objection, Mr. Rasmussen, as you know, we're not bound by the strict rules of evidence. Mr. Rasmussen can confirm that this is the, that he witnessed the images, I think that's close enough for our purposes.
I'm going to direct you to, we're going to have a series of photographs here that have been marked as Olympus Exhibit G, and then are numbered, so this would be Olympus Exhibit G one, and then it would be G one through eleven, so... Mr. Rasmussen, you testified that you have, were at the site, do you recognize this photograph?
Yes.
Is this an accurate depiction of the site on the day you saw?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go through these pictures one by one, I'm going to ask you to, you know, kind of answer the same question each one, just verify that that's what you saw, and give the board an idea of what exactly they're looking at. So this first photo appears to be the pond, can you give an explanation of what you see?
Yeah. You can see that it extends the pond, you can, they're off to the edge, and here there are two floats. These floats were used to move this accumulated sludge out of the pond and back to the mined borehole back when they, they operated the plant.
Thank you, next picture. Again, same question, is this an accurate depiction of the site when you visited?
Yes.
When, when did you visit that site, do you recall?
This is a photo of the former Coors refuse area. Back in the, I'm going to check my notes, back in nineteen ninety-four to two thousand, Coors refuse was taken from this site by a conger generation plant, and then the ash was returned, and the site was regraded.
And just, even if you don't know the exact date, it was within the last several weeks that you visited the site, correct?
Correct.
It was within, it was within the last several weeks that you visited the site, correct?
Yes, yes.
And that's when the site appeared as, as it disappeared, correct?
Yes. This is a photo of the pump house. You can see the large pipe from the pump exiting the building.
And just for the record, we're going to, because it's written in the mark, this is Olympus Exhibit G three. So again, you testify, you're testifying, this is the home station in Flitford, is that correct?
Yes.
This is currently turned on once a month, you said, and that's the only purpose it is to currently serve, correct?
Yes.
All right, do you know if there's water service to this site?
No, I don't believe there is.
Any sewer service?
No.
Is there a bathroom?
No.
Heat or air conditioning?
No.
Is this suitable for habitation or personal use?
Objection, I believe that's out of the scope of his expertise.
Testifying as to what he saw is for, what exactly you could do with this.
Objection's overruled, go ahead, Mr. Rasmussen.
It houses an electrical panel and a large electric motor, there's really no room to do anything else in that building.
Now, in your professional opinion, would you expect this pump to be needed at this site again?
No.
Why, why is that?
The transfer of the gravity flow of the water in this mine down to the Russellton Mine, down to the Indiana Ole Mine, has been effective for the past seven years. Mine water quality is fairly consistent. I don't, I don't, can't foresee a reason to have to turn this pump back on.
All right, we're going to go to the next photo, which is marked as Olympus Exhibit G four. Same question, what, what structure is this?
This is the, view of the outside of the structure that holds the peroxide tank.
And what was the purpose of this structure?
Just really to provide, you know, keep weather off of the peroxide tank.
And what was the purpose of having the peroxide tank in the first place?
The peroxide was used to oxidize the mined water to allow metals to drop out easier.
And again, you testified earlier that this is no longer being, no longer being used.
Correct.
We're going to, what had been marked as Olympus Exhibit G5. Is this the same, the inside of the structure we're talking about?
Yes. This is the, this is the peroxide tank, a stainless steel tank. This is a secondary containment, stainless steel secondary containment structure around it.
And again, you testified it is currently not being used and there's nothing in it.
Correct.
In your professional opinion, do you expect this would be needed again?
No.
And again, if it's the same answer before, you can give it, but this is the same reason the pump station is not being used.
Exactly.
Does this facility have water?
No.
Sewer?
No.
Any bathroom facilities?
No.
Heat or air conditioning?
No.
Is it suitable for habitation?
I don't believe so.
Is it usable in a working environment?
Correct.
Sorry, I guess, is it usable, is it usable as a working environment?
Oh, no, it's just a storeroom for a tank.
Now, we're on to what is marked as Olympus Exhibit G6. Same question as before. Which, what structure are we looking at here?
This is called the electrical building.
And what was the purpose of this, this structure?
This was used, apparently used for storage back when the plant was operated for part storage. And there's some large electrical cutoffs for the electrical supply to the transformer located outdoors.
Move to the next picture. This is Olympus Exhibit G7. Is this the interior of that structure?
This was a partitioned off, small space. Hasn't been used for years, as far as I can tell.
Can you move to the next picture? Is this a close-up of that same picture from before?
Yes.
Can you identify what we're looking at here? What is, I guess, what are the small brown objects that are on that?
As far as I could tell, they were rodent droppings of some type.
Does this structure have any current use?
No, the current operator doesn't use it though.
Is there water in this facility?
No.
Is there sewer?
No.
Bathroom?
No.
Would you consider this to be safe for human habitation?
No.
Is it usable as any kind of working environment?
No.
If you had to characterize the current condition of the site as relates to repair, code compliance, and safety, what would be your opinion?
I don't think this building's safe for use.
What would be your recommendation? If you were being asked as a mine reclamation site expert, what would you hear?
I think an objection, he's not a structural engineer. He's been asked to render opinion on whether a building's suitable for use and if it's...
I'm asking him as a mine reclamation expert, if he was asked to, what he would recommend of the site for the purpose for recommended, what would you recommend?
Well, I think, I think it was the question before that, which, which, which was a question regarding the...
Condition and structural condition.
Yeah, the code compliance and condition. So, I will sustain that objection, I think you're correct, Mr. Rasmussen.
If you were looking at the site as a mine reclamation expert, what would you recommend be placed in this location?
I would move the electrical shut-offs out of the building, place them on a suitable board next to the transformer and demo the building.
So, if you're, in your opinion, you would simply tear this structure down?
Correct.
It serves no mine reclamation purpose?
Correct.
Alright, this one has been marked as Olympus Exhibit G9. Again, same question before, what structure is this?
This is the lime silo. Dry lime was fed into this and then would feed down through a cone-shaped bottom. The mine water would have come up through this pipe, been mixed with lime, and then discharged into the pond.
Is this currently being used in any way?
No.
Is it needed?
No.
Why would there not be a need to use this structure?
The results we've gotten from DAP regarding the overall discharge from the Indiana Mine, the water is neutral to alkaline, so there would be no need to add lime to this water for treatment.
And this is now Olympus Exhibit G10. Is this the, is this the outside of that tank we just saw?
Yes.
And so, what, this is where the water would have been coming?
Correct, this is where the water would have discharged from the lime silo.
And based on your observations as someone who does this kind of work and looks at these kind of facilities, what is the condition of that pipe?
This would have to be rebuilt to operate.
Again, this, this is the inside of that tower, is that correct?
Yes, this is the inside of the lime silo. The lime, cone-shaped bottom of the silo is here, the lime would feed down. There's a mixer here and a vibrator to get the lime to mix into the water.
And again, for the court reporter, this is Olympus Exhibit G11. Based on your experience with this kind of equipment, what is the current state of that equipment?
Lime silos like this, if they aren't operated fairly continuously, they clog up, they corrode. I don't know that this thing would operate if you turned it on.
Is there any water at this site?
No.
Sewer?
No.
Bathroom?
No.
Heat or electrician, or AC?
No.
Again, if you were giving an overall characterization of this, of this structure and equipment, and its availability for future use, what would you say of uses?
For this to operate again, I'd have to get rebuilt.
Taking the site as a whole, and the structures that, again, you've, that you described, were currently operational and now are not operational and cannot be made operational, would you consider this to be a working site?
No.
An objection that that question is leading, as far as his classification of this, it could never be made operational?
I will rule the objection.
In your professional opinion, is it likely that this site will be a working mine reclamation site in the future?
No.
Again, can you give an explanation of why you don't think this would be needed?
The way that they are now transferring water from this mine to the Russellton to the Indiana Mine is effective. It's cost-effective for somebody working off of a trust, and it has been effective for a number of years. So, I can't envision a situation where you would have to start treating mine water at this facility again.
I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corns. We are just after nine o'clock. I think the board may be willing to get into the cross-examination of this witness, or do we want to talk about that for a second? Want to move forward? Okay, so I'm seeing four, four head nods here. Do we need a break? So, why don't we go ahead and we'll move on to the cross-examination of this witness? Hopefully, we'll be able to finish that up this evening. Mr. Rasmussen, Eddie, you gonna start us off?
I plan to, but just so you know, I do think I have a lot of questions, so I would expect this to go quickly if that changes the board's minds.
Alright, we are gonna press forward bravely and violently. But we are going to, we're gonna definitely try, we don't have to, we want to have the asset bring this witness back. We can avoid it, so we're gonna, we're gonna try to get through it. Within reason, if we're still on this witness in an hour, we are gonna shut it down and then come back for the next hearing. So, that said, Mr. Rasmussen, Eddie, do you need a minute to get yourself set up? Of course, if you want to take about a two-minute break here, restroom, whatever, pull out your... Alright, folks, if you go ahead and take your seats, we're gonna just keep chugging along. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and go back on the record. And we'll pick it back up with the cross-examination of Mr. Rasmussen by Mr. Rasmussen. And we'll pick it back up with the cross-examination of Mr. Rasmussen by Mr. Tim Rasmussen. So, Mr. Rasmussen, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rasmussen, were, were you cave by LTV to testify here tonight?
Yes.
Were you given any specific instructions as to what to say, um, similar to how Mr. Blitton Duffer was told to remove a, a measurement off of this setback exhibit? Were, were there any specific instructions for what you said?
Excuse me. Sorry. We didn't give you the specific instructions as to what to say, similar to Mr. Blitton.
Were, was everything you said an original thought, an idea of your own?
Yes.
None that was told to you by anyone else?
I gained information from other people about what, how the mine op, mine water treatment mine operated and when it operated and why, but.
Okay, could, could you elaborate on who told you what that, that you said here tonight? So, let's start with, did anyone from the, the DEP tell you what to say here tonight?
No.
Did anyone from, or, or did anyone from the DEP inform what you said here tonight?
Yes.
And who was that?
Uh, I'd have to look up his name. Somebody that I hadn't dealt with a lot before, but, yeah. A person at DEP, that's where I got the information regarding the mine water quality.
Is that, me taking that noise?
I'm still not sure.
I'll try a different technique, just in case. So, so what, what did that DEP, or what part of your testimony came from what that DEP person told you that you aren't able to identify?
He provided review of the water quality chemistry from the Indian River District.
And, and are there, have you submitted any evidence? Do you have printouts or documentation supporting what, what you're saying the DEP said?
I have not supported, provided any evidence, no.
Okay, um, I would move that, that portion of, of Mr. Rasmussen's testimony be, be struck due to it being hearsay?
This is obviously, the, the strict rules of evidence don't apply here. He's testified as to his own, um, understanding of, of how the site operated and he's testified as to where he was getting some of the back card information that supported his indictment.
Objection is overruled.
Okay, moving on. So, so the, we agree the property owner is, is the Clean Streams Foundation, is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, did, did anything LTV, or LTV, the Clean Streams Foundation tell you, inform your testimony tonight?
No.
Okay. Um, did, did anything AMD Industries tell you, um, inform your decision tonight?
Yes.
Or, or your testimony, sorry. Um, and, and what, what portions of that was, was, came from, from AMD Industries?
AMD Industries explained how they would run the mine water pump for two hours once a month. They also inspect the site daily, because they don't operate anything.
So, they're, they're at the site daily?
That's my understanding, five days a week.
Five days a week. Do you know how long they're there each day?
Just to make sure that there hasn't been any vandalism, that's my understanding.
Um, Joe, if you could bring up that consent order. So, what I'm, I'm showing now is going to be crowd exhibit nine. This is a consent order. Remember that's page six, if you could go up to the top so we can describe it. And I don't have it printed out, I will provide it electronically before we leave tonight to any, anybody who wants it. So, just, just for the record, this, this is a consent order that, um, was sent from DEP, and I believe if you could add a page or two more, um, it was actually issued by Commonwealth Port of Pennsylvania. Um, are, are you aware, Mr. Rasmussen, of a consent order regulating the operation of, of the, the Berry, the Russellton Mine Treatment Site?
I'm aware that LTV had, uh, when they went bankrupt, their bonding had been converted to a trust, and that trust was then used to fund treatment of mine water at these mines.
So, I'll ask you again, are you aware of a consent order, um, legally requiring certain things to be done at this site?
I have not seen a consent order, no.
Okay. Could you go back up to the top again, please? Uh, not the whole tale, okay. Um, could we go up to page, I think it's six? Okay, um, letter O there relates to the Russellton Mine. So, so you're not aware of the consent order, um, so I guess you're, you're not aware, aware of this statement, but, um, let, let me just see if you agree with, with the legal consent order regulating this facility.
I'm going to object, he testified that he's not seen this consent order, there's nothing related to this consent order or, or legal requirements that were, in his direct testimony, he testified as to, uh, the physical condition and use of the site.
I want to overrule the objection, we're going to give, we'll give Mr. Rasmussen a little bit of leeway here, I just want to, um, recognize that Mr. Rasmussen, the witness has testified, he's not familiar with the consent order, but to the extent that you want to ask about, um, you know, provision that's relevant to the testimony provided, I think we can, we can agree with that.
So, so do you agree that, that the Russellton Mine has the potential to break out of locations, consistent with this consent order, if, if the water, uh, levels in the mine pool are not maintained, not prevented from overflowing?
In, in general terms, I would agree that if the mine pool was allowed to rise too far, that it could come into bottoms of, of local drainage.
And... Does it surprise you that there is a, a legal order, order? If you could go down a little more. People want to highlight something else. Well, let, let me just paraphrase, um, maybe, maybe you can, you can find as well I say, or, but would it surprise you that there is a consent order that, that basically legally requires that, that facility to operate perpetuity?
Objection again, he did not testify as to, you know, the, the legal, um, requirements here, that's right to the operation.
I, I think Mr. Rasmussen did give the opinion, uh, that, that he didn't feel like that, that the facility was, was ever going to operate again. Uh, I'm not suggesting that Mr. Rasmussen was able to, uh, you know, provide an opinion on the court's consent order, but, uh, I think the question was, would you be surprised if you learned that? I think before we just asked this hypothetical, I think we need to identify, you know, where in the consent order we're talking about here, so maybe you're here.
So, so there's a order there in section one, LTV shall continuously maintain the mine pools and the banning the fly mine of the Russellton Mine, which is, the Russellton Mine is the, the mine in question here, I believe. And there are the levels that are specified. Wouldn't, wouldn't surprise you that, that legally those, those facilities are required to continue operating?
I don't, in my experience with DEP consent orders, is that's not how their consent order is normally viewed. DEP has the ability to control the mine pool or any mine pool in any, in, in, in fashions that make the most sense to them.
And what is your experience with consent orders?
Went through a consent order when I was working with, uh, Consol Energy at the Bailey Mine, um, also looked at consent orders that involved treatment trusts for a couple of the Consol legacy properties.
But you, you're not aware, I think you already testified, you're not aware of this one, um, is, is, just to clarify what you meant by what you said about, something about change, is it, is it your opinion that, that a legal, legally binding consent order, um, can just be changed without some sort of order rescinding it?
Objection is a legal question.
Yeah, objection sustained, next question, please.
Are you aware of any newer consent orders that might affect this facility?
No.
Can you bring up the... Sorry. And for the record, I'll, I'll add that exhibit nine and, and what pool B exhibit ten were, were obtained by a right to know request to the, the Department of Environmental Protection. So, the next thing we're going to show is a contract for services, um, between the Clean Streams Foundation and AMD Industries, um, so this will be crowd exhibit ten. So, so your, your conversations with AMD Industries, did, did they tell you that they, um, have a, a contract to operate the site?
Yes.
And what was your understanding of, of their contract?
Just simply that they were contracted by Clean Streams to operate the site.
So, so it's your testimony that, that the site still does have an operator, I think you said someone is there five days a week?
Correct.
And then, okay. And, and as far as you know, um, the, the contract with AMD Industries has not been terminated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so this will be crowd exhibit eleven, this is actually a, um, this is, this is AMD Industries webpage, um, where they, they cite Russellton, the Russellton Berry Plant as, as a case study. Do you, do you agree with the, the characterization here that the Russell Berry, Russellton Berry Plant, Allagay County is pumping the average of 1.6 million gallons per day?
No.
So, so you believe this is incorrect? Do you?
It, it may have when this was published, whenever that was, but it, it doesn't, I don't know.
This is how it was currently, so, but at, at one point you agree it was treating 1.6 million gallons per day?
Yeah, that sounds, sounds like a reasonable number.
Okay. And when did you say the, the, um, facility was changed over from lime to hydrogen peroxide?
Somewhere around, yeah, somewhere around in the early 2010s, my understanding.
If, if you could go to the bottom of this. So, in the, in the business hour section, um, they make a claim, they say our staff is on hand at each facility we manage 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, so you're saying you, you disagree with, with AMD's, um, statement here, that, that they are not actually there at this time?
My understanding is they're there for a short time, five days a week, to make sure that things haven't been vandalized, and then they operate the deep mine pump for two hours once a month.
And when the, when the facility was pumping at whatever amount it was, like, when, when it was in operation, would it be reasonable that they would have been on hand 24 hours a day, like their, their webpage says? Or if you don't know?
In my experience, people didn't, we, people didn't operate AMD plants 24, they wouldn't have a person there 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
I must be optimistic. So, your experience, this is, how, how much time have you spent at a facility, um, well, let me, let me rephrase that. Was, was the time you were at the Berry Facility, um, I believe you gave the date, I don't recall what it was, but was that the first time you've been at the Berry Facility?
Yes.
So, you wouldn't actually know what was done at the facility when it was in, if it was in a higher production than it is right now?
Correct.
I think for this next part, we can go to your, um, photos. Are we able to bring up, um, exhibit G? Okay, if, if we could go to, uh, G four. Mr. Rasmussen, would, would you agree that, that this building is, is maybe approximately 30 feet long?
Objection before, uh, you've not called a building, you've called it a destruction.
Mr. Rasmussen, I, I, okay, we're, we're not asking for legal interpretations here, I think we're just trying to figure out the, the, uh, but like, but your, your objection is noted, but we'll, we'll rule it with that understanding.
So, so, did, did you answer, would you agree this building is, is maybe 30 feet long this direction in, in length?
Approximately 30 feet.
And in, in height, it looks like it's maybe at least two times the height of, of a human, so, so maybe 10 to 12 feet high, um, to the bottom of the roof, would you agree with that?
Yes.
And so the other dimension we, we can't see, um, about how big was it that direction?
Uh, I would say it was... 12, maybe 15 feet at the most.
Okay. And I don't believe you were asked if, if this building had electrical service, does this building have electrical service?
It has, uh, an electrical feed to what was the pump that would pump the hydrogen peroxide.
So, so is, is the pump no longer there?
The pump is there, it's disconnected.
Okay. We'll see if that's shown in, in all photos. So, if, if we could go to the, the slide five or photo five, please? So, this, this is a photo that's inside, could you tell me, um, what work was done inside of this facility when this, when was what you would call in use?
None. There's simply a pump, small pump on the other end of that tank, that pumped hydrogen peroxide, there'd be no other work done in this building.
How was the tank built?
From the outside.
From the outside, there, there's a facility, and if there was any maintenance work done in the building, um, would that have been, I assume that would have been done in the building?
Um, I guess if there was something that had to get done to the tank, that would be inside the building, but there's no other facility in there to be maintained.
And in your testimony, um, you had said the peroxide was used to help the iron drop out of, of the pump water, is, is that correct?
I, I said the, the peroxide would oxidize the iron, and oxidized iron drops out easier than unoxidizing.
So, so what part of the process would, would adjust the pH of the water?
None. Peroxide doesn't adjust pH.
If we could go to slide seven, please. Mr. Rasmussen, do you know what this thing down in the corner of the bottom left corner of photo seven is?
That looks like a baseboard, an hardturf baseboard.
Baseboard heater, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So would you agree that when, at least at some point, this looks like it served as someone's office?
At some point.
At some point. And other than a cleanup, do you agree that there's nothing that would prevent this from being used as someone's office again?
I guess somebody can use the desk and the chair as an office. Seems unlikely to me.
What's that based on? Why do you think it's unlikely?
It would, you know, for somebody to have an office there, then they would presumably...
Excuse me, Mr. Rasmussen, I apologize. We're getting a lot of like side chatter, I know it's from the back. I'm having trouble pinpointing it, but if you could, you know, not have any side conversations, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Rasmussen.
Sure. An office is there if somebody needs to be there to operate the thing that's nearby all the time, and it doesn't need to operate, so.
So it's at least usable as an office, is that what you would say? It may not be currently being used, but it's usable?
I, yes.
Okay. If we could go back to slide or photo six, please. Would you agree that this structure is enclosed and that portions of it, or maybe all of it, are protected from the weather?
Yes.
And I believe you testified just a moment ago that you saw a baseboard heater in it, correct?
Correct.
And just to confirm one last time, I believe that you, your testimony brings out that this at least one time was usable and may be currently usable and future, in the future be usable as an office of some sort. Is that correct?
I guess, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you aware if the site is maintained, is mowed, does it keep a tidy appearance generally?
It would appear that the grass has been mowed at some point.
It's not overgrown. I mean, let me ask you another question. Did you see tire tracks in and out of the site?
Yes, I'm, yes.
On its access road, so its access frequently. I mean, I guess you already testified for that. If you could bring up that correspondence. So the next thing I'm going to show is some correspondence that I'm going to ask you. So this will be crowd exhibit twelve? Roman's done with you, at least I am. While we're reading there, as far as you know, has this, this site has not been decommissioned, correct? You said they pump it like once or twice a month?
Once a month, yes. They would operate the deep mine pump once a month.
And I believe you said that you thought that was for maintenance reasons or something, is it?
Yes.
Is that categorized? Okay. How do you know that?
That's what representative from AMDI told us.
He told you it was purely for maintenance reasons? Okay. So this crowd exhibit twelve, this is some correspondence that I had with Dean Hunt, who is, he's the administrator for the Clean Streams Foundation, the property owner. Do you agree with Mr. Hunt's?
I'm just, I'm just objective this document. She's not seen, he's not, and he's not listed as any of the individuals on it. And I believe the foundation has been set for what you would know. It's hearsay.
Okay, I'll ask him, do you agree that the plant is active and treating water at that site?
No.
So you think that, so how would you characterize it? Would you say it's inactive?
Yes.
Even though someone's there five days a week to do something? And that it's maintained, ready to go through maintaining the pump?
The pump is maintained.
So would maybe idle be a better description? So do we agree it's not decommissioned?
No, it's still there.
It's still there, and you're saying...
I don't believe it's capable of being operated as it was in this current condition.
But it is still capable of pumping water, you're saying?
Yet the mine pump still works.
Okay. Well, I think, I think I'm done with you, so we have these exhibits electronically that I'm happy to put on a flash drive to share with everyone. I'll get started on that right now.
And Mr. Rasmussen, I think you withdrew that email exhibit, is that correct? Are you planning on entering that during your case in chief?
I will, I'll enter during my case in chief.
Okay, thank you. So we'll not mark that one for now. Thank you. Mr. Horns, Mr. Lucas, any redirect for Mr. Rasmussen?
Couple very brief questions. First, if you want to bring up the picture, you know, but you look on cross-examination, were asked about the structure of how the hydrogen peroxide tank and whether it has electricity. Do you know if there's any lighting in that structure?
No, there's none.
Second, when you were on your direct testimony, I'd asked a question about whether the current condition of the building, that the electric building, electric structure was in disrepair, rodent infested, or co-compliant. That question was objected to, but I believe on cross-e, the objector then was asking you about your opinion as to the sustainability of that building. So I'm going to re-ask that question as to whether that office, in your opinion, is co-compliant or safe for human interpretation?
No, it's not.
Nothing for you.
Yeah, I just wanted, can I check for the question? I'm sorry, Mike couldn't stand up that much. Did he ask him if he thinks the building is co-compliant, and he's not a code officer or building inspector?
And, you know, we already sustained that objection. I think the opinion about whether or not it's appropriate for, or I think it was, was it habitable? I'm sorry, was that the term you used? I think he can give a lay opinion as to that, but I agree on the co-compliance.
Thank you.
Eliminate that response and question. Any other questions for Mr. Rasmussen? Mr. Riard, come on up.
Thank you.
Please remember to identify yourself with the court report.
I think you already did, but I'm Jim Riard from Aurora Lane. Hi, Mr. Rasmussen, thank you for being here. Just a few quick questions and we'll get you out of here and rest. Could, somebody bring up the photographs again, please? I think you were already... You were on the right one. Oh, no?
Yeah, wrong computer.
And could you go to the, I think it's number two or three that is part of the pump. And I know you testified this is about 1,200 and something. But I did have a question. I'm just a little confused and I may have missed her, but I want to clarify something. When this picture is up, before you mind of, you were asked if the, was any reason to use this building or whatever. And I think you said you cannot foresee a reason to turn it on, but you also said that it's turned on once a month. Am I confused or are you referring to a different pump?
No, it's two different issues. The pump gets turned on once a month just to make sure it will spin up. However, the way the mine water has now been directed through not only this mine, but the Russellton Mine and Indian Mine, eliminates, effectively eliminates the need to pump water at this site.
So I'm curious, and again, I'm the gentleman, so if you can help me. Why would they keep maintaining the pump by turning it on once a month and not maintain the other buildings at all? What's the difference between this and the other buildings that this needs to be maintained?
That's a question for D U P.
Okay. So you don't know, you don't know why. But you do know they turn it on once a month?
Yes.
Do you know about how long they run?
Two hours.
Two hours, so they are running it for something. Could you go to the next picture? Okay, one question about this building.
I don't know, I'm keeping my hands away from my microphone.
Yeah, you're doing a good job. Would you agree, hoping at this building, I have seen a photo, there's somebody at the front of it. It looks like this is a relatively new building. I mean, it doesn't look as old as the other building. Do you get a sense for how old this building is?
I believe this building was installed 2012 to 2014.
Okay, much newer relatively speaking than the other building.
Yes.
Could you go to, and the roof and everything on this building, you notice what's in it and the beginning, that's all in good... That's all in good condition, the roof and things, there's not water penetration coming into the building, right? And from what you could see?
What I could see, yes.
Could you put the next picture of the inside of the building? As you mentioned, there's nothing to maintain in here but the paint, but I'm just curious about two things. Number one, and I know this is a very minor thing, but I just am curious. When I look up at the top right of the corner of the picture, I see a rail and a white thing. I'm assuming that's a garage door.
Correct.
And from what I could see, that garage door was in very great condition. Would you testify? Did you notice that it was?
I would think it was indeed.
Yeah, I mean, the rails aren't rusty, the door's clean, okay. The other question I have is, it looks like there's some things stacked on that cabinet that looks like rubber gloves and other stuff that somebody was using in there. Do you know what that was at all?
No.
Last question on this slide. Bottom and bottom left corner, I see a handle and a seat. Is that a tractor or something?
Yeah, it's a lawn tractor.
Okay, so they, that lawn tractor stored in there that they are using to maintain the property, probably?
That's what I assume, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had is, in your testimony, you mentioned that you saw, for the other building, you saw no reason that they would restart this or the other facilities. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So my question was, is, first of all, you said you were there with a rep from AMD Corp.
I'm hurt.
You said you were at the site with a representative from AMD Corp.
Correct.
Okay. You say that it was your opinion that you never have any reason to restart the facility. Did A, did this representative or anybody from AMD Corp or Clean Streams tell you that they would never restart this?
No.
Can you envision in your expert opinion any circumstance in the future that could cause this facility need restart, even the pumping? Like, let's say a hundred-year flood event putting a lot of water in the mines, just to catch something that I don't know anything about?
No, not really. Again, the water flow through the mine, looking at the data that came from D U P is fairly consistent over a number of years, back to, my gosh, I'm trying to remember what the graph was, back to 2012, 2014. In my experience, mines, unless they're, now, mines don't generally react to hundred-year storms. Since a hundred-year storm, it's, it can be catastrophic, but it's a fairly short event, and most of that water runs off. So...
It can't run into the mine.
It can't run in fast enough to really impact the mine flow. Now, mine flows will change seasonally, but for a major storm event, you just don't see it.
And then I think, so just to reiterate from a prior question or something, but nobody from AMD Corp or Clean Streams told you that they would never use the facility again?
Correct.
And then finally, and I don't know if this is beyond your expertise, but since this is your area of expertise, I'll just add. Are you aware of how a mine pool, like the one under here that's being pumped and, or being drained? How that is affected when a unconventional well is drilled through the mine pool? And, you know, actually goes right through the pool with that? Do you have any expertise? And what that could do to the pool, or if that could change anything, or if that could change the acidity or allow groundwater to get into here?
The experience I have was when I was working with CONSOL, and we had both a mining group and a natural gas group, and property was shared. We never saw any changes to the mine water quality if a Marcel as well was put down to a mine work.
Okay. Is that everything I needed to know? Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Redirect, just one, just one question.
Sure.
Mr. Rasmussen, you were asked about the pump station that is turned on once a month, is that correct? That is 1,257 feet from the lead-up pad, is that correct?
Correct.
1,257 feet from the pad.
All right, Ms. Austin?
My name's Victoria Austin. Hi. What is the name of the AMD representative that you were with on the site?
All I know is first name is Bo.
Bo? And there was just one representative?
Correct.
Why didn't that representative come here tonight to make the testimony that you were making?
Objection, that is outside the scope of any sort of testimony provided.
Did you request that that person come and...
Same objection.
I mean, you can, I think the second one is a fair question. I think I know the answer, but, you know. Any questions? Did you ask any of your representatives to come testify tonight?
No.
Thank you.
At the end of the redirect, are there any additional questions by party objectors for Mr. Rasmussen before we let him go and call it a night? Okay, great. Well, before we wrap things up, as everyone probably recalls from Dionysus, we do need to announce the next date and time and location of the hearing. So unless I get a look or a shake of a head, my understanding is we're meeting next Wednesday at the same location, March 1st, at 6:00 PM.
And Mr. Rasmussen, just before we close, I would like to just move to admit all of these exhibits, A through G.
Thank you. They are big age. Any other items for the board to address before we recess? Okay, we'll recess till next Wednesday. Thank you very much, everybody.